Good evening and welcome to the June 27, 2023 meeting of the Milton Select Board. Oh, now you can hear me. Good evening and welcome to the July 27, 2023 meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Item two is Discussion, Decorum and Courtesy at Public Meetings. And if there's no objection, I'd like to, from the members, I'd like to just quickly state why we have this on the agenda and give a few brief comments if there's no objection, and then we'll open up to everyone else's comments. On March 7th of this year, in the case of Barron versus Kalinda, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court held that the civility code in the town of Southborough was unconstitutional and that using it was, quote, "forbidden," close quote. The court stated, although civility, of course, is to be encouraged, it cannot be required. The following, what I'm about to say, is an encouragement of civility and not certainly a requirement. In some of our recent public meetings in Milton, including in our town meeting last month and in our meeting two weeks ago, there have been moments that have lacked civility, lacked courtesy, lacked kindness. Sometimes it seemed intentional, sometimes it seemed to be a slip of the tongue, an offhand remark, or an unguarded Zoom mistake. At other times, there have been statements and questions that have appeared challenging, confrontational. It has not been one person, and it has not been one manner of action. I think it's important for each of us, each of us here in particular, to remember that when in public meetings, we serve as models, models for children who may be watching, models for adults who may want to participate in our public life. While each of us has our own style, and some of us may have been elected because of our particular styles, in my view, it's best for the town and for the efficient conduct of our meetings to encourage each of us to recommit within the context of our own style, to seek the highest levels of courtesy and civility and respect towards one another and all who participate in our meetings. I believe that we are a town of neighbors who are courteous and respectful towards one another. I also believe that we are a forgiving and charitable town with residents who are willing to forgive their neighbors who make a mistake or admit an error. Let me tell you about one of my errors. One of the hallmarks of the Supreme Judicial Court case that I just quoted is that the Select Board may set a reasonable time, place, and manner of restrictions on public comment, like the three-minute-per-speaker rule that we have here in Milton. Two weeks ago, I was lax in enforcing that three-minute requirement. Now, why is the three-minute requirement important? Why should I have not been lax? Because under the law, everyone needs to be treated the same. Now, my being lax forced another member, Ms. Bradley, to step in and correct me, and she was right to do so. I was wrong. Going forward, we'll set a timer for each speaker at public comment, and we'll let them know 30 seconds before so they can wrap up their remarks. Now, let me just conclude with a story, and I don't usually tell stories, but just let me conclude with a story. More than 25 years ago, when I was a prosecutor, I was prosecuting a drug trafficking case. And at one point during the trial, I didn't like how the defense attorney was treating one of my witnesses, who was a state trooper. And so, the defense attorney and I got into it, and we got into it pretty good verbally in front of the judge, in front of the jury, and we were very discourteous to one another, and we were very disrespectful to one another. And the judge, who was a very wise judge, he's since passed, his name was Peter Brady, he called us over the sidebar, and he told us that we needed to knock it off, and we needed to be more courteous and more respectful to each other. And when we went back to our places in the courtroom, Judge Brady addressed the jury. He said that the prosecutor, that was me and the defense attorney, were acting the way they were because they were very passionate about their positions and their responsibilities. But the jury should understand, he said, we're all friends here. I've always remembered that, and I think about those words whenever I engage in public discussion. We're all friends here. We're all neighbors, and as has been said many times, we can disagree without being disagreeable. We can be passionate without making it personal, and we can be courteous, respectful, and kind, and still make our points. So, let's all be good neighbors and work together for our town. With that, I'll open it up for other comments.
Mr. Zulis, Ms. Bradley will first, if she wishes.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Let's hope I clicked this on the right way. Shane, if I didn't, please let me know. First and foremost, to all of those in the room, I extremely apologize for what I said last Tuesday. I was not swearing at a person. I was swearing at a frustration and used that word that was inappropriate. I immediately apologized after the incident, and then when my colleagues and I went into executive session, I also apologized there. But now I am apologizing to the public in a more humble fashion where folks can see it. I am deeply sorry. I did not know I was not on mute. Either way, it should not have been said, and I take full responsibility. It's something I've always done. It's something I've modeled, not only for my children, but I've modeled at the State House as well. I'm not a politician. I'm a simple person, and when I make a mistake, I admit that I've made a mistake. So, I just want to say again to my colleagues, to say again to the public, I am sorry for swearing two weeks ago.
Other comments?
Mr. Zulis.
Mr. Welsh.
I have written a statement. This is kind of hard for me because coming off of being one of the organizers of a two-day event where over 4,000 residents of this community came to celebrate what is special about Milton, I find myself sitting here tonight in a situation I never imagined. My father, who served the town of Milton for 44 years, taught me as a young boy that to live a life of service to the public is a true honor. For all of us on the Select Board, we serve as defenders and champions of everything that is important to our citizens, our employees, and the community. Our mission includes respecting human dignity and integrity. Political views within any municipality may differ, but respect for individual rights can never, ever be abused or trampled upon, especially by those elected delegates of Milton. To be honest, this situation is almost surreal because the events leading up to my words tonight beyond anything that I ever imagined before joining this board seven years ago. All of us have read in recent emails from residents that were received, from personal calls, or from other interactions, that the actions of one board member during multiple recent Select Board meetings are cause for serious alarm and concern. Our meetings, and anyone who's been here knows, have become hostile and uncomfortable. In April of this year, just two months ago, a longtime elderly resident of Milton and a member of the Milton Fire Station Building Committee came before us with a $290,000 foundation gift to the new Milton Fire Headquarters. Instead of thanking him, Ms. Bradley ridiculed he, Fire Station Building Committee Chair Brian Walsh, Chief Madden, and two of her own colleagues with the public on-air negative disrespectful comment about, wow, four old white men. At our last meeting, Ms. Bradley began by making suggestions of, quote, "financial misappropriation of federal funds on a loan granted to a hard-working Milton business owner who appeared before us to support another new business." The truth of that matter, as you know very well, Mr. Zulis, as we talked about, was wrong, and the business owner who was publicly embarrassed did nothing wrong or inappropriate. Later in the same meeting, Ms. Bradley verbally chastised two former female members of this board, Mrs. McGetrick, who served for 12 years, and Mrs. Agostino, current chair of the Disability Commission, and a disabled person herself who served on this board for three years. To attack them on the unintentional use of the word "selectmen" is just wrong. The same applied to former member Robert Sweeney, who also appeared on the same night to speak publicly to our board, a board he served on himself for three years, about an issue he supported. We talk about dignity and respect, yet the tone and temperament towards these longtime residents is embarrassing and unwarranted. Finally, in the same meeting, Ms. Bradley, in a very hostile and direct manner, voiced her frustration and her vote that she opposed with the F-word towards the board and within full earshot of the Milton online community. Zero tolerance is exactly that. Ms. Bradley, who I have supported and I endorsed publicly to join this board in 2022, has lost the trust in Milton. We can never abuse the rights of anyone who comes before our board. I often hear about wonderful, diverse Milton. This diversity includes everyone, regardless of race, gender, color, orientation, or age, the same rights and protections. We, as a board, are charged with respecting these rights always. My father was 100% right in what he said to me. Now, as I begin my own fourth decade in public service, Ms. Bradley, by her words and comments, has hurt good people of Milton who live and care about the place we all call home. I sadly but strongly request that you resign your position from the Milton Select Board. She has zulus. This time, I intend to leave this meeting, and I will no longer participate in any public meeting this Bradley is present at or attends. I will tend to all my other duties as a Select Board meeting member and attend any meetings that she is not present, and that is the position. And I ask all residents of the town who support what I've stated here tonight to join me. Thank you. And I apologize to the residents of this good town that they have been subjected to something like this. Thank you.
All right, other comments or questions? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. As Select Board members, we represent the people in the community. We set the bar in behavior, respect, and integrity. We may have different viewpoints, but we must respect and listen to those viewpoints. We all come to this board with different life experiences, under the Select Board, sorry, life experiences. Under the Select Board duties and guidelines, we have Select Board duties. Those include to represent the Select Board and town to the public in a way that promotes community and goodwill. Under Select Board ethics, there are three areas of responsibility, including community responsibility, responsibility to town administration, and relationships to fellow board members. Unfortunately, we have a pattern of behavior from a board member that does not emulate these characteristics. Back in early March of this year, we received a letter from a resident that said, in quotes, "It is important to hold elected officials accountable. Defensive outbursts, eye-rolling, smirking, and behavior like this is extremely unprofessional and disrespectful to the elected position in which one serves. It is bullying and condescending, and for any citizen watching, it is a deterrent to speaking at your meetings." Given all of the work in the community being done about anti-bullying, it is important for the Select Board to set the example. At that meeting in February, the fire department received an anonymous donation of $275,000. A photo was taken of several people instrumental in securing that, and a comment was said in reference to that of all the old white men. Now, fast forward to July 13th at our Select Board meeting. There are some comments from residents that we have since received, and I'm going to say what some of them are.
You mean June 13th, Roxanne?
I'm sorry, June 13th, thank you. June 13th. These are some comments from residents that we have since received, in quotes, "Appalled by the way some citizens and fellow board members were treated. Unprofessional, huffing and puffing, and constant interruption is a form of bullying and intimidation. Rude, combative, condescending. Dropped F-bomb, which was aimed at Select Board member Musto. Behavior stops the reasonable citizens from speaking out and participating in town government. Inappropriate behavior. Citizens expect town leadership to act with decorum and professionalism. Outbursts were crass. We should not tolerate the use of profanity nor any negative reference to groups or individuals. Not the correct temperament. Watching with children and as a parent instilling the importance of being active in the community and treating people with kindness and respect, this is quite disappointing." Select Board members work for the residents of this town. Many asked for the resignation of this member. As a Select Board member and as a whole, we serve the residents. We represent the people and treat people with respect. We serve and don't belittle or swear at each other or others who come before us. Belittling, bullying, and disrespectful behavior shines a negative light on this board and the integrity and the relationship we have with the community. When a member calls out "two planning board members," in quotes, is not too bright and trumpets, do we continue to tolerate that? As one community member said, enough is enough. The community has trust in this board to do the right thing. Any member who displays this type of behavior has no business representing the residents in Milton. We are much better than that. We deserve better. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Zulis.
Well, I don't have any written statement, and perhaps Abraham Lincoln said once, "It's better to keep one's mouth shut and be thought a fool than to open it and remove all doubt." But I'm still going to open my mouth and say a few words. I, for myself, as a member of the Select Board, accept Ms. Bradley's apology. I think it's an apology in good faith. I was taught at a young age to forgive quickly, and I think that's the best approach here. I think quick judgment and slow to forgive, that's how it went. Don't be quick to judge and slow to forgive. Be slow to judge and quick to forgive. And admittedly, I'm the newest member of this body, and I don't have the length of history that other people have on this body. I'm also, I have to say it, a straight white man, and the lens that people look at me through is different from the lens that people use to look at Select Board member Bradley. People may disagree with me on that. That's fine. There's study after study that shows that that's true. That said, I think that this is a very important discussion. The first thing that I did, and I hope that many other people emulated me after the meeting, was I called Erin and I asked her how she was because I was concerned. I was concerned for her. I was concerned because of the way that the meeting went, and I wanted to check in on her and see how she was doing. That's what neighbors do. They check on folks. They ask them how they're doing, and they give them the grace to forgive, to ask for forgiveness, and they forgive them. I think when we think about children who watch Select Board meetings, for one, God bless them, if they can sit through four hours. I don't know that I would subject my own children to that, but if they do, good for them to learn about local government. I would want my children to learn the lesson that we are all neighbors, and we try to work together. Sometimes we're not perfect, and when we make mistakes, we can be forgiven, and we can move on. If we teach our children that one slip-up means that you're out, and I understand that folks have a litany of complaints, again, I'm glad that I haven't lived under the magnifying glass that Select Board member Bradley has lived under for, since the time that she's been elected and likely before. I have a bit of a different perspective on this, but again, I feel very strongly that if we're going to leave our children with a message, the message has to be, it's okay to make mistakes. It's okay to be wrong. It's okay even if you get caught using a four-letter word. If you come forward in contrition and you change your behavior and you don't do it again, I feel like that's the lesson that I would want my children to learn. I've spoken with my kids before who have dealt with bullies and other folks in the schools, and I've asked them to consider, why does that, you know, why does that kid have that perspective? Why are they, why do they say those things? Don't judge someone for something they said in seventh grade when you're a sophomore in high school. It's tough to do, but people change. People can grow, and I feel like, as a community, we have to embody that value more than any other value. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts about this. I'm sure that I have proven myself a fool, according to Abraham Lincoln's doctrine, and I'll cede my time over.
Other comments or questions? All right, well, certainly to be continued, as we all try to do better, and we all try to live up to our roles and try to serve the community as best we can together moving forward. So, with that, if there's nothing more, we'll go to item three, which is public comment. Actually, it's item four on here, public comment. So, public comment, we have a seat there for someone who wants to come up. Please sign in, put your address. We allot 15 minutes for public comment, three minutes a speaker. Mr. Milano will, and also the people who are online and just remote, just raise your hand as well. And Mr. Milano will let us know as we have people come on online, so we can kind of coordinate it. Mr. Milano will keep the timer for the 15 minutes. I'll keep the timer for the three minutes, and somehow we'll all work out. So, we have someone here. Do we have anyone online?
Andrew D'Amato has raised his hand.
All right, so why don't we go to the first speaker here? Oh, and we have other people raising their hands. So, we'll go, why don't you come up and stand up behind Mr. Hogan. So, Ms. Denny first, and then we'll have people stand up behind here, and then we'll go to Mr. D'Amato after Ms. Denny. So, I'm going to put my timer on, so we're going to try to keep it to three minutes, and I will let you know when we're at 30 seconds. All right, so Ms. Denny, please proceed.
I hope the mic is working.
Hold on. I didn't hear it, so.
I didn't hear it either.
Is the mic working? It's working? Great. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Ross Denny. I live at 107 Columbine Road, and I'm here this evening in support of Select Board member Bradley. On September 28, 2022, there was a subcommittee of the Select Board and the Planning Committee that convened to determine who would be on the Master Plan Committee. Over the course of that meeting, many comments were made by members of the Select Board that elicited a stark response from the community. I received text messages to watch that meeting, and unfortunately, my children were in the room and heard several vacated remarks. They heard members publicly humiliate other community members. When I say members, Select Board members, publicly humiliate members of our community and share personal information that was not publicly known. And I did have to have that conversation with my child and explain to them that while people may make bad choices on a day-to-day basis, you don't hold that against them because they can learn and grow. And in the moment, they might be intentionally trying to be offensive, but in many cases, they're just being candid, and they're being honest. And I said, at least you know who you're working with and who you're dealing with when people share remarks that don't align with our values. But I told them, most importantly, that you do forgive them, and you have to believe that they can learn and grow, and that one day, they might accept you as a member of the community, even though we've only lived here for 13 years. With that said, we all do make mistakes. I'm an elected school committee member. I've made my fair share, and some I publicly acknowledge because I recognize there are some people that are hurt by what we say. But I don't believe that it's necessary for you to resign your position because I didn't ask those other two members to resign theirs. And if I can teach that lesson to my kids, and I can respond to the community members who said, I may not frequent businesses in town anymore of people who make hurtful statements, and when I see their family in the street, I'm not going to say hi, and I don't agree with that. Like, we can all do better, but we also have to be candid with people about how we feel. So, I wrote a very long letter to both the Select Board and the Planning Committee to share my concerns. And with that said, only one person responded, but guess what? I still work with the members of the Select Board and the Planning Committee as appropriate because that's what's professional to do. But I do think it's important to share one's concerns and then give everybody the opportunity to grow up and move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. All right, Mr. D'Amato will be next. And Mr. D'Amato, because we're not in the same room, I apologize in advance. At 30 seconds, I'm just going to say 30 seconds, okay? I don't want to, is Andy?
He's joining us now.
Okay. Andy, Andy, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, this is Andy D'Amato, right off the.
And Andy, just want to give you the heads up. At 30 seconds, I'm just going to give you the 30 seconds, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. I can appreciate that. I'm Andy D'Amato. I'm a town meeting member, Prestig Seven. I also sit on the Eastlake Neighborhood Association, and I'm here in defense of my wife, Suzanne Lombardi, who was unable to attend tonight because she's volunteering at a charity event. Last week, Suzanne spoke to this board with no obligation to do so, to thank the board for their passive port of her restaurant to plate, and to introduce the new proprietor, El Barrio, to the neighborhood. For this act of goodwill, Suzanne was met with an aggressive and hostile line of questioning about unfounded claims and misuse of ARPA funds, which is unconscionable. Obviously, she was not, that was not the appropriate time to do that, and Suzanne was not prepared to defend those accusations. My wife has been a dedicated, boy, she was born here, lived here her whole life. She's been a dedicated member of this community, and for her to be assaulted like that and allowed to continue the assault is unconscionable. She's done so much for this community, like a lot of people, it goes under the radar. She's raised tens of thousand-dollar.
Andy, we lost you. Andy?
Yeah.
We, try again. We lost you. I gotta put you on, hold it. Andy, can you try again?
Hello?
Yeah, you're not coming through right now.
It's in my mic.
There. Try again.
Hello?
Yeah, now we can hear you, Andy.
All right. What was the last thing you heard?
It was $10,000.
Dollars for the community.
$10,000 for the community.
My wife has raised tens of thousand dollars for the Milton Foundation. She supports almost anybody who walks in that door, you know, asking for donations. She employs a variety of people, most of them from Milton, and I don't know if she's been upstairs at the plate at Bassett Street. It's a very diverse group of people who work there, and that's by no accident. My wife sees no color. She sees no sexual orientation. She's been one of the biggest supporters of the LGBTQ community that you could just ask anybody up there. She's helped many of her employees who have issues with that. She's helped some who are transitioning. She's pocketed parents for these bits. She's, you know, it was just unconscionable what happened to her. And it was inappropriate. Obviously, it wasn't a meeting about ARPA. She shouldn't have been attacked. After Ms. Bradley, this is to Mr. Zulis.
Andy, 30 seconds, sir.
To Mr. Zulis' comments, I do believe in forgiving, but this is not the first time. This is not the second time. This is not the fourth time. So, it won't be the last. And I do not feel that Erin Bradley can be an effective member of the Planning Board right now. It's too much, too much.
Okay, Andy, sorry, we're running on time.
Okay, Mike, thank you for your time. Just closing, I just want to say, the thing that disturbs me the most about that incident is that people watching, who normally maybe want to voice their opinion about something in town, are feeling more and more intimidated by the discourse that happens and don't feel comfortable with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Chairman Zulis, before we, can I just have a point of order real quick? Three minutes is three minutes. So, when we, when we, when we say three minutes is up, I think it needs to be up because, and all respect to everybody who's coming here, but we've got to keep these short.
And I would just, thank you. I would just also say that he did get cut off a little bit.
No, but I stopped the time when he was cut off, and so I was trying to, I was trying to make it even. I did my best. I gave him a little extra. Did my best. I gave him a little extra. No, I was trying to give a little extra time to make it even. So.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
We're doing our best. We're doing our best. Mr. Hogan?
Paul Hogan, 56 Pierce Street, Milton. I'm a former member of the school committee, former chair of the school committee. I was 12 years on the school building committee, the last school building committee, not, not the current one. I'm here representing a group of people concerned about the Mass DOT plan to make a roundabout at Route 28 and Chickatobit. That's your next item of business, I understand. And members Zulus and Musto are familiar with my position, who I represent. I think members Bradley and Zol, you don't, but there was a big meeting last year by Zoom, and hundreds of people from Milton attended. And we presented a petition of over 1,800 signatures of people against this. I want to say that we were not well heard by Mass DOT, and they were kind of informed that it was a fait accompli. The people that are concerned about this are mostly the neighbors on 28, trying to get out of their driveways, trying to get out of the streets in the morning because of steady stream of traffic. One of the problems that we understood and learned last fall talking to Mass DOT is they never did a traffic study going back towards what I call 12893 into Randolph, and what the impact that's going to be. Second of all, I think if you ask questions about how pedestrians are going to cross this roundabout, flashing yellow lights is all they're going to put up, and also the bike path. The bike path crossing is very difficult. We understand, the group that I represent understands that something has to be done. We understand there's some danger there, and it just can't be the same. However, we don't believe that it's been fleshed out completely. We always thought that an extra lane with a light for turns, widening the roadway, flattening that hill, you know, people coming from the south flying, they can't, they can't see into that. And we really believe that Mass DOT, they believe that roundabouts are great, and you know, if you travel to England and there's roundabouts everywhere, and France and whatnot, they are good. But in particular, we don't think this intersection is good for it. Mass DOT referred to Barnstable. They talked about the new rotary they put in Barnstable Roundabout, and not very good. I mean, it was very good there, but the traffic is much lower. And Mr. Zulus, I promote you running this.
Sorry, 30 seconds.
Select Board.
I hate to do, I smell a compliment coming.
Prior to coming to Milton, I ran the Watertown City Council for four years. There was nine of us, and our public hearings used to go for two hours. But any event, with Mass DOT, we killed the rotary in Watertown Square to build these lanes that we're talking about, because we found the rotary there was not good. So I know that very short period of time, you have a lot to do tonight, but.
And we're at three minutes.
Yeah, there's 1,800 people, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. All right. Next, Mr. Humphries.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the important business of our town. Okay. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and all of you should have received a memorandum that I circulated yesterday to the Select Board and the Planning Board on the topic of reclassification under DHCD's Section 3A guidelines. I spent a lot of time on this, and so I really do encourage and I kindly ask that you review this document. Reclassification under Section 3A, I believe, is Milton's best path towards compliance under the MBTA Communities Act. You have the duty to follow the law as written and to make sure that it is applied appropriately and correctly to Milton, and that Milton complies the way that the legislature intended it to. Okay? So I believe that Milton's classification as a rapid transit community does not achieve that for a couple of reasons that I highlight in my seven-page memorandum, and I lay it out very clearly. But I would like to touch on one topic in particular tonight. Ridership on the Matapan Line, which we know, and transit experts will tell you, is a central determinant of rapid transit status, is most comparable to a bus service, not a rapid transit rail system. In fact, many of the MBTA's bus stops experience higher average weekday boardings than some of the stops on the Matapan Line. And the MBTA has even floated the possibility of replacing the train with a bus. So they're saying, you know, a rapid transit system, replacing it with buses would not, you know, result in a lapse of service. So think about that. I lay out many other arguments, but in conclusion, I summarize. Because of the unique characteristics of the Matapan Line and the town of Milton, the DHCD must reconsider Milton's classification as a rapid transit community. The Matapan Line is a historic, single vessel feeder trolley with limited carrying capacity and ridership at some stations comparable to bus stops. Importantly, and I would like to stress this, it is without a direct transit link to Boston, meaning that any trip to your central business district requires you to get off the train and reboard at Ashmont. That is not rapid transit. Tim, our town planner, at the last planning board meeting signaled that at the direction of this board, he would assist in this effort. I encourage you to discuss this. Please instruct the town administrator to author a letter to DHCD requesting reclassification. We are running out of time. Thank you, and thank you for all that you do for our town.
Perfect timing, Mr. Humphries.
Thank you.
Perfect timing.
Mr. Chair, I have two minutes left on the 15 minutes total.
Two minutes. So we'll go with one more. I don't know if, I don't know.
They did raise their hands a little bit later.
They led, okay, so we'll go with Mr. Davis, and then we'll ask everyone else to come back at our next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Select Board. Glasses?
Go.
Jim Davis, 345 Center Street. Thank you for allowing me the time tonight to speak about MBTA zoning and reclassification. That is why I'm here. Milton is classified as a rapid transit community, and I feel that this classification is an oversight. Looking at the memorandum expertly prepared by Jackson Humphries and sent to you and the Planning Board, it's clear that Milton has been mistakenly classified. This memo provides many reasons why Milton's classification of rapid transit should be contested by the Select Board. For example, if you look at page four on Jackson's report, "The short distance between stops on the Matapan Line resulted in double, triple, and quadruple overlaps of the half-mile buffer radii, resulting in concentrated development mandates under DHCD's model." Within that statement, there are three good reasons why Milton should not be classified as rapid transit. Distance between stops is just too short, does not allow the trailer to get up to a reasonable speed to be considered rapid transit. The distance between stops is so short that when a half-mile radius is drawn from each stop to define the zoning area, there is overlap within the areas, creating a very small opportunity to rezone for the mandated 15 units per acre. There's not enough land area to satisfy the zoning guidelines due to the short distance between these stops. Other towns own the land on both sides of their trains. I think of the Riverside Line and Brookline. There's Brookline on both sides of the track. Those towns basically have twice the land area to develop. Milton has the Napa Ponset River, which obviously we can't build on, and north of that is the town of Boston, a city of Boston. Boston, by the way, is exempt from the MBTA Communities Act. Another reason why we need to reclassify is because of public engagement. This is an area where Milton needs more time to get the word out to all its residents. The town planner is hosting monthly forums to inform the public of this new mandate, as well as a survey posted on the town planner's website. And the planning department with three people in their office is doing a great job, but we really have to do more. DHCD guidelines have not provided enough time to create awareness. Outreach takes time, way more time than we've been given. Reclassification will gain Milton an additional year to comply. This extension of time will allow more outreach, input, and engagement from Milton residents, which I feel is very important. Now, the DHCD is expecting Milton to create a by-ride zoning district, write the zoning law, call a special town meeting.
30 seconds, Jim.
Vote on it and submit it to the DHCD for approval by year's end, 2023, December 2023. There's just not time. The proposed reclassification will introduce a deliberate pace, enabling Milton to make well-considered decisions. Rush decision-making often leads to hasty and ill-advised choices. Given the permanent, significant, and wide-ranging implications of this matter, it's crucial to avoid impulsive decisions. It's understandable that the board may not be fully informed or have conducted extensive research on this topic. Therefore, I kindly request the board to allocate time to thoroughly review this memorandum, pose relevant questions, seek input, and by doing so, become evident that there is a, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Thanks, Jim. Want to let you get the last one.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
All right. So we've gone through our 15 minutes allotted. For those who didn't get on tonight, please come back at our next meeting. And, and both the hybrid folks and the, and the others, please come back at our next meeting for public comment. So with that, we will move on to item five, which is a presentation from the Mass Department of Transportation on the Randolph Ave and Chickatobit Road intersections. Mr. Milano, do we have our representatives from?
Yes.
I see them. I see a wave, so.
No, at least Josh Bartis is here from Mass DOT. I believe he was bringing a couple of colleagues with him. I'll let Josh take it from there.
You can do your best to speak into the microphone so everyone can, can hear you. That'd be great.
Good evening. I'm Josh Bartis, project manager at Mass DOT. I work in the major project section out of Boston. I'd like to thank you for inviting us tonight to provide you an update on the Route 28 and Chickatobit Road Intersection Improvements Project. I'm going to talk about where we are in our design process, and I'm here with Steven Tyler and Jessica Lizza from Howard Stein Hudson, who are going to give us an update on the design from the 25% to the 75% design stage.
Josh, if you could just pull that microphone a little closer and speak into it, that'll be helpful.
Sure. As well as some changes from the comments at the public hearing. As you know, we held our design public hearing on October 27th of last year, which is performed after our 25% design stage. Since then, the design engineers have been advancing the 75% design, which was submitted in April to Mass DOT, the Town of Milton, and DCR. We'll be holding our internal comment resolution meeting soon on the 75% submission sometime in early July. We were not able to have someone here from our District 6 office, but they gave me an update on some short-term improvements they've been able to put in place over the last many months. They've been checking overall signal operations at Chickatobit Hillside, Reed, and Reed's Dale, including possible new pedestrian timing based on three seconds per foot and yellow-red clearance intervals. They've installed new countdown pedestrian signal heads where needed. They've installed retroreflective borders on all signal heads to improve visibility, installed speed feedback signs on Route 28, restriped pavement markings on Route 28, conducted a speed study along the corridor, which they just received that information, so you should be receiving that soon from the district, restriping all pedestrian crosswalks with continental-style markings to improve visibility. And of course, we will continue to work to identify other short-term improvements as we move forward. The comments from Representative Driscoll and others at the design public hearing regarding roundabout metering are still being discussed. Mass DOT considers that, considers roundabout metering as one possible tool to resolve some operation concerns. We're not ruling it out, but we are still discussing it with both our district and headquarters' traffic sections. The property impacts associated with the project are being finalized with the need to secure rights in both public and private lands. The public land impacts will be coordinated with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, or EEA, and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, or DCR, to ensure public access is accounted for in the overall final design. With the 75% design submission and review recently completed, the design engineers are now working on development of the 100% design submission and completing the applicable environmental permitting requirements. The project has begun preparing permitting documents related to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, MEPA, and Massachusetts Swetland's Protection Act, WPA. MEPA permitting through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and WPA permitting through Milton Conservation Commission will occur later this summer and fall respectively. Now, I'll turn it over to Jessica or Steven to talk a little bit more about the design.
Thank you, Josh. My name is Steven Tyler. I am an associate principal at Howard Stein Hudson and the project manager for this project here in Milton. In addition to the work Josh has described, early work for the 100% submission is also progressing. The following improvements have been incorporated into the design based upon questions and concerns raised at the October 27, 2023, design public hearing. Thank you. October 27, 2022. Those changes to the design include the proposed rapid rectangular flashing beacons have been changed to pedestrian hybrid beacons at the crosswalks going across Randolph Ave, also referred to as Route 28, to provide further accessibility and safety improvements for the four-lane crossings, two lanes in each direction. Advanced warning signs have been added to advise motorists of the existing headquarters path crossing located to the south of their project limits on Randolph Avenue 28. The Town of Milton's requested water main replacement through the proposed reconstructed intersection have been incorporated into the project in coordination with the Town of Milton Department of Public Works. The design is also considered a public comment regarding raised crosswalks on Randolph Avenue. However, due to the roadway classification and being a primary emergency response route, it is not considered an appropriate, an appropriate treatment for this location based upon guidance issued by the Federal Highway Administration. Also, at the request of Mass DOT, Howard Stein Hudson will be conducting a corridor traffic study along Route 28 to determine if there are any recommended short or midterm solutions to improve safety and mobility beyond the isolated intersection of Route 28 at Chickatobit Road, and analyze the alternatives identified in the metropolitan planning organizations' Route 28 corridor study. This study will be conducted separately from the current design work for the intersection of Route 28 at Chickatobit Road. The study will conduct road safety audits at the intersections of Route 28 and Reed's Dale Road and Route 28 at Halen Avenue. The study will also include the development of conceptual sketches and planning level cost estimates for up to three corridor alternatives. Additionally, alternative control strategies at up to five critical study area intersections will be explored at a conceptual level.
And that's the end of our update for both parts of the project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bartis, Mr. Tyre, and Ms. Jessica, I'm sorry, your last name?
Lizza.
Lizza. All right. Comments or questions from the members?
Well, I have one, but I wanted, if you wanted to, if nobody else. Thank you. So I, my, I, I have seen the effects of roundabouts in improving intersection safety in rural Ohio of all places. I know that reference was made to Europe earlier. But I think my bigger concern about this project is the sort of the broader implication. And I think, I'm worried that we're going to be playing a little bit of whack-a-mole with the traffic situation in terms of which is the dangerous intersection. So if we keep, if we don't consider the downstream effects, and as you come into Milton on Route 28, I'm very concerned that the traffic light at Chickatobit, which now kind of provides at least a break in traffic for folks to safely exit the side streets, that is going to be gone, and there's going to be a steady stream. And so instead of seeing a concentration of fatalities in one intersection, we're going to see it spread out down, down the way, which either case is, is obviously very problematic. Human life, I think, is, we can't argue with the idea that we're trying to work very hard here to improve the safety. I'm just concerned that we don't understand the downstream impacts of this roundabout for traffic exiting the side streets well enough to say that this roundabout is really going to reduce sort of net fatalities across the board. I'd love to hear your thoughts about that. Thank you.
Yeah, we've heard that concern, and that's a large portion of why the corridor study has been initiated, is so that since the scope of this MassDOT project is confined to the intersection, then we can analyze the corridor in full and look at problems like that. that, taking into account the plans for the roundabout and how can we improve things for residents, businesses, side streets to the north. So we'll be doing a pretty comprehensive data collection of a lot of those more minor side streets as part of this study, and looking at the crash history, building off of what the MPO did in their study to see what can be implemented, knowing that there's no full corridor reconstruction project funded currently through the state. You know, what can we do at the short and midterm to combat those concerns that we've been hearing?
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, please, Mr. Zoll.
So does this mean that we're going to pause on the roundabout until the completion of that study, or are we going to forge ahead with the roundabout while that study takes place?
My understanding is that the roundabout design will be continuing while that takes place. It will be concurrent efforts.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. In the functional design report, I have it here, I was looking through it, I noticed that there was no table of operation summary for alternatives 1, 2, or 3, but only in the roundabout itself, 4. And I think that without that analysis, it's, I don't see how you can come to this conclusion without having that analysis in there. So that's a little bit of an issue, because we need the data to look at these alternatives that have, alternative 1, 2, and 3. And I printed up the whole thing. I have it here. And it's interesting, because on page 1 of this book, you say that you've evaluated design alternatives, and also said it's due to safety and congestion issues that have been noted. So, you know, it's concerning that you don't have that. And I think that in order to give a summary of what your conclusion is, that you really need to have this analysis in there to look at. And I think the other thing is, we really don't know what the, without that, we really don't know what the impact will be on all aspects of that intersection, you know, with coming in off of Chickatobit. It looks like, from what I read in here, that the queuing is going to be longer on Chickatobit with option of a roundabout. But again, I don't have the backup data in here, so that's a problem. I also would say that, you know, like I said, it looks like the queuing is long on this, it's acknowledged in here in that thing. Right now, you mentioned that there's a de facto of a left turn lane, and I'm just wondering why we wouldn't do that. I know many, many years ago, when engineers looked at this, they were going to put turn lanes in over there. They were going to flatten the hill, and they were going to put dedicated turn lanes. So it's concerning that we're going to this option that is sort of just sticking something in a roadway, a very expensive option, when there could be other alternatives that are cheaper but accomplish similar goals. And let's see what else I had written here. I know that the other thing is, you were talking about this corridor study, and that was mentioned at the meeting. And I think it's very short-sighted to continue with a roundabout plan without looking at the entire corridor, because as Mr. Zoll said, you know, you're going to be pushing things elsewhere, and there'll be unintended consequences from that. And so I think that's wrong. I mean, we had a petition of 1,800 people. That's pretty significant. I can't remember the last petition that's come before us that large. I mean, that's amazing. And, you know, these are people that live in the area, people that travel in that area, and they have a lot of concern about that. And I don't think that, you know, we're not listening to the people. And I do have a quick question. I've traveled that road quite a bit. I'm just wondering, are you all from this area, and how often do you travel that roadway? If everybody could answer that for me.
I am not from this area anymore. For the past five years, I lived in Dorchester until last week, though, so I was 15 minutes away and traveled a lot of weekends to the Blue Hills for recreation. I don't often commute through this corridor. I usually commute by train.
Okay. And the other two gentlemen?
I do not travel through this corridor.
Thank you.
I also don't commute through this corridor either.
So I appreciate, you know, the honesty with that, but I think that that's the issue, is when you talk with people that use this roadway or live on this roadway, they understand what's going on there sometimes a little better than, if you're removed from an area, you don't understand it, I think, as well as the people that use that roadway all the time. They understand what it's like to get out of their homes on that roadway. They understand what's going on in that road. And I think, I mean, again, that many people petitioning us, you know, I think is significant, and I think it warrants us listening to the residents on this one. And I think it's incomprehensible to me that you want to continue with the design when they're talking about, obviously, you heard us about the corridor itself, but yet you still want to forge through with the design, and you still haven't provided in this document anything that shows me that about 1, 2, or 3, you obviously went to that design, the most expensive design, by the way, at seven or eight million. And maybe we could have done something that would have provided safety and security for people, but also helped with the queuing so people can get in and out. And so I think that's a problem for me, sitting here, listening to that. And I would hope that my fellow board members would feel the same way on that one. And the other thing I guess I would say is, you know, I would urge our board to really consider sending a letter to DOT and whoever it needs to, to say that we are not supporting this roundabout, and let them go back and let them look at 1, 2, and 3, and get us this information, and look at the whole corridor. And I think that's something we should absolutely vote on. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The money that this is costing, this doesn't come from the town, it comes from the state, correct?
Yes, HSEF funding, so Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is the main reason why the safety is the biggest of many things that we're looking to improve.
Absolutely. So the funding comes from the state, you're looking at the safety, this is obviously a trigger point for you guys, that's why you're here. But it's a state-owned road, correct? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I have my facts correct. Thank you so much.
One more quick question. So I appreciate the update on the safety improvements that have been made. I'm wondering if you've done any studies or looked at to see if those safety improvements have sort of changed the numbers in terms of wrecks or, you know, accidents in the areas since they've been completed?
Do you mean the short-term improvements that I listed?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe so. I can check, but I think it's also been a little too soon for that fallout to have occurred to analyze.
About how long do you think you would need to understand what the?
I don't know. I don't know if Jessica would have a better idea as a traffic engineer, but I can ask the district.
Yeah, I won't speak for the district, but generally, as a rule of thumb, you would want at least a year to make any type of conclusion. You could maybe have some inkling from six months, absolute minimum, but generally, a year, ideally three years, is what we look at as a minimum. But with short-term improvements, I've seen a year.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? So, oh.
I was just going to say, thank you. I was going to say, it is concerning that we don't have 1, 2, and 3 that they mentioned in here, and they go right to 4. And although it is for safety, it's also, it's safety and it's for congestion. It says it right in their first statement in this book, that is the functional design report. So, I mean, again, I really would strongly urge our board that we take a vote to send a letter to them saying that we oppose the roundabout and have them look at these other alternatives. You know, years ago, that was okay to do the turn lanes. And again, they should be looking at the totality of it. And, you know, again, I think, you know, to Ms. Bradley's point about its state money and, you know, and safety and so forth, of course, that plays into that. But you're asking for a change on a roadway that you haven't evaluated the whole thing, and you cite in your report other options, but you don't have the information on them. So you really, I don't know that they, but there's no data to support that in this booklet, which is what they have produced. So I think that strongly, if you have that many people telling you that from our town, I think that we should do that. The other thing I did want to say is, at that October meeting, I know some legislators had asked for an onsite meeting, and I'm curious as to where that is at this point. Anybody?
I'm not sure specifically about legislators. I know Mr. Milano had asked about that in the same request as this, and I should have gone through legislative liaison for this as well, but I jumped the gun and just agreed to it. So I responded to him that he can do that through Dan Fielding for this area, and we can do it through the normal processes. But I'm certainly open to doing that myself personally, but I can't answer for Mass DOT as a whole.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to, oh, sorry. I just want to respond to Ms. Musto's point. So I would describe myself as not opposed to or against the, not against or for the roundabout. I think we just have insufficient information still. I think Ms. Musto's points are well-taken about the alternative paths, and I would also like to see, you know, whether it's six-month or year-long data from the sort of short-term improvements that have been made, because I think they're, they seem to be along the lines of what's being proposed for pedestrians and bicyclists going forward, more markings, higher visibility. And so in the absence of that, it's difficult to say how I would feel about this rotary, but as of yet, I don't have enough information.
Other comments? So, oh, Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I guess what I would say is that they're going to proceed and continue the design unless we say, hold off on finishing this design till we have the information, until they look at this other alternatives. I think we should at least be saying that to them, that stop at the point that you're at and do all of this, and evaluate the short-term solutions that they've already implemented.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. Can they stop? If we say to, I'm literally asking, I don't know. Can you, if we were to say you should stop, is that something that we actually oversee?
Not me personally as a project manager, because my mandate is, I'm given this project, and then we start analyzing it like back in 2019.
Right.
And I see it through the whole design process, according to all of our rules and regulations and all that. So that's my prerogative, that's my job. So that's what I'm going to do.
Right.
So if I had some super high-up person telling me I'm not working on this project anymore, then that's how projects will move around.
That's how it would report.
So I don't know is the only answer I can give you, but it wouldn't be me doing it.
Right. I guess I'm just, I guess my point is that I'm confused, because it's a state road, and I don't know that I have any authority to stop a project on a state road. I can absolutely say we should do more study, I can absolutely say all those things, but I don't, I honestly just don't know the state structure on whether or not you guys would stop if we say stop. Do you? I don't know.
I don't know the structure either, but I guess I would say, what is the harm in the town sending a letter to them saying that, right? I mean, we don't know, right? So if we felt that way, that we wanted them to, you know, evaluate what they said they evaluated in here, and look at, to your point, what they've implemented, then I think that, you know, that would be the way to go. You should at least send a letter having them stop for, going forward on the roundabout design, look at these other ones. I want to see those tables, you know, and I want to see that information, and I'm sure everybody on this board would like to see that, it's not just me. And I think that that would be the way to do it, and look at the whole corridor like you said you're going to do. That would be my thought, is, is there harm in doing that? Nick? I'll ask Nick.
Well.
For the board.
Well, yeah. Other comments? So I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. The corridor study, this is something that was raised in response to our comments in the DOT's letter to us on February 6th, that the DOT said it was committed to performing that. What is the timing on completing the corridor study?
Yeah, so we just received NTP from the state on our contract for that as of this month. So what we're working on right now is gathering historic crash information, and the first action item will be to coordinate those road safety audits with the Town of Milton and Mass DOT. And then we'll need to collect new traffic data, because the MPO study took place over COVID, so it relied on some pretty old historic data that it had to adjust. To do that, we think that it's most appropriate to wait till September, when schools are back in session, rather than collect data over the summer, when it might not be as reflective of most of the year. So that's going to be driving, when we can start our analysis right now, is going to be September. So we're working on getting the count company lined up so that we're reserved for those counting dates right when school's back in, and then we'll be moving forward with the analysis and coordination with the state. And we don't have a set timeline of what that duration looks like right now, but that's something that I imagine will start to be developed now that we have notice to proceed.
Can you give us an estimated timeline? Based on your.
It hasn't been discussed with the Mastot District 6 yet, so I don't know what they have in mind. But I would say for analysis, we would be able to work on that fall, and then start working through different potential solutions over the winter and incorporate comments. And I mean, I think it's reasonable to wrap it up within a year.
A year from September or a year from today? And I don't mean to put this, just as an estimate.
I, as an estimate, I think a year from today could be reasonable, but I think it will depend on how things go.
All right, fair enough. So corridor study as an estimate, a year from today. Now, how does that fit into the timeline of what is being done with the roundabout? And what effect, what if, if we get, if we get information from the corridor study a year from now, what impact could that have on the roundabout, given the current timeline of the roundabout, if that makes sense? You see where I'm going, right? So can you, can you help us out on that? Can we, will the, will the corridor study be effective with respect to the roundabout design and analysis? Or will it be, will it be a fait accompli at that point?
It is possible with this project that it could have some changes, most notably due to Article 97 changes and that whole process taking a very long time. And they just changed some of the legislation with that, so now there's more involvement with environmental partners and DCR. So our design, if we're not quite done with 75%, but we've completed 75%, we're having our comment resolution meeting soon, and they're moving on to the 100%. Our design is progressing quickly, so the design might be done well before Article 97-type processes will be completed.
Okay. What would be the effect of putting a pause and waiting until we had the information from the corridor, the corridor study?
Personally, I would be against that, because I believe in the project.
I understand that. What would be the effect in terms of the timing? I'm sorry, let me be clear. What would be the effect in terms of the timing of the project if we waited until we had that information?
I don't know.
You don't? Okay. Well, let's take it back for a minute. Let's say, based on where you are now, when do you see this getting to 100% design?
Do you know what the design schedule currently shows for completing 100% design? If you ask me?
The earliest it could be ready for construction is next summer, so it wouldn't be out to bid any year from, in roughly a year from now.
Fair enough. So if we, if we, if we waited until the corridor study were completed, based on the estimate, that would, that would say, that would tell us that construction would be put off for a year. Is that fair to say?
But also, the design and right-of-way are tied together, so if we don't have finalized right-of-way for sure, they can't start that Article 97 process.
Right-of-way is getting the land.
Right. They initiate their process, they handle it, once we get them final right-of-way plans.
Now let me ask you this. If you went down the path, continued down the path of the roundabout, and you, and worked on the Article 97 process to get the land along with the design, and then a year from now, the corridor study comes out and says, you know what, this is not a good idea, we should do it another way. Would we be in a position to do that?
I'm not sure.
I understand, I understand. It's speculative.
It's hard to answer that.
I know, I understand. That's fair, that's fair. Probably an unfair question. Ms. Bradley, and then Mr. Zoll.
Okay, so I guess I have a follow-up question to what the chair was just saying. So we often talk about walking and chewing gum and doing two different things. And so I'm curious about the study. So the study's going to be a year out, approximately, we'll have the results. The construction is set to start a year out. The RFP is set to go out, right, in a year, is what I thought I heard him say. The RFP is set to go out, right, in a year is what I thought I heard him say.
Yeah, I just thought, I saw him, he may want to supplement. Mr. Tyre, you may want to supplement that year out for construction.
So the year out I mentioned is the earliest timeframe it could be advertised for bidding.
So it's just the bidding that we're talking about?
And then, correct. And the bidding has a fairly lengthy timeline and the contracting has a fairly lengthy contract timeline as well.
Totally get that. So could the bidding, if it went out and we're, we're dealing with this in other pieces of our town and bidding and bidder fatigue, but I'm curious, if the bid were to go out and then it was to be changed because of what we learned from this study, is that something that we could put into the, the new RFP or will we have to start again? What I'm trying to figure out is if we learn things from this study and your bid is already out, can we modify that so that we can take into consideration what we learned from this study?
In the capacity, given the, the stage of the project you're at, if it's that far along, then you would probably only be able to make small changes. Sometimes we make changes in construction, but it's not giant changes.
Okay.
It wouldn't be like going back to a signal. It would be like making some other changes.
So that's where we're at? So there's no signal if we continue on? Okay.
Mr. Zull.
So this is probably a follow up question to Ms. Bradley's point. If there, if the, if the area study, the corridor study shows that there's need for further action down the road, in your experience, do you think that would modify the roundabout itself or would that simply result in another project being put further down so that we would continue with that? Or would you, or would we most likely also need to modify the roundabout if you've had experience in other intersections like that?
For potential projects coming out of the corridor study?
Yes.
They certainly could include modifying the roundabout, but obviously it'd be more costly to reach from the roundabout to wherever you're talking about with information from the study. Ideally, the study gives us information about multiple locations to put projects in, but there's also issues like funding and planning and all that, which your department is not in. So a lot of times we get handed projects after they've already done all of that kind of legwork.
Looks like you'd call on that if you'd like to.
Yeah, I just want to add on to what Josh was saying, that I know one of the district's goals is also through the study, you know, what could be done without, you know, a large funded project as well to mitigate some of that. So while it certainly will lay the groundwork for any need for further projects, it could also provide an opportunity for what can be done with, you know, changing the roadway with pavement markings, things like that, that are much more easily implemented outside of like a large Mast dot tip project.
Thank you. I just, and again, thank you so much for answering all of our questions. Obviously, this is a very dangerous intersection. All of us are very concerned about it. And that's why you're getting a lot of questions. I know, Ms. Musto, I think, did you have another one?
I do, I have a couple. So I guess my other question, if that's okay?
Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. One thing I guess I would say is, I know you had just mentioned that you like this project. This is the project you want to see there. But again, in your own document, you, you mentioned other alternatives. And I think you, you've gone to this fourth alternative, but you haven't looked at the other ones. And some of them include left turn lanes. There's no, there's no data here for that, okay? So I'm concerned that if we, you know, if we don't just sort of stop at this point, do the corridor study and look at that in conjunction, if you do any changes along that in conjunction with how it would be with these other three options, I think that's not doing your job. You guys are engineers, you know, you got to look at all the options. And I think it's just, it's not showing us the full picture. I think that's the thing is we want to see the full picture, at least I do. And I think you're set on this one idea and you mention the others, but you don't really mention the others, you know, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The, so the functional design report goes in with the 25% design. So it wasn't meant to serve as a robust alternatives analysis. It was more to document some of the decision making behind the 25% design. Back in 2018, there was an alternatives analysis that was performed that did run through the analysis of all of those options that the functional design report references. So that analysis was looked at and the three options were essentially three different signalized options. One that utilized the footprint of the road by reducing the southbound lanes to one through lane with a left turn lane. And then using that space on the northbound approach by having only one receiving lane to provide one left turn lane and two through lanes. One widened the road to maintain the two through lanes in each direction with left turn pocket lanes. And then a third one added a left turn lane off of Chickatobet Road. And then we looked at a roundabout. Initially, we were concerned about the grades of the roundabout along the roadway. So when MassDOT looked at our alternatives analysis, they asked us to go deeper into the roundabout because a report was provided that showed that it had the largest safety benefit. And at this point, the intersection was continuing to rank very high for safety issues in the state. And so there was a lot of back and forth with us and MassDOT on the analysis of the different options and cost benefit. And I think, you know, it was acknowledged that the roundabout is a, is a costly alternative. But since it was a top crash location, safety was, you know, deemed a priority here. And through that coordination, we then presented in 2019, the one signalized option and then the one roundabout option at the public information meeting with MassDOT backing the roundabout option.
On your first page of your introduction, it says it's due to the extensive safety and congestion issues. I think that I would encourage our board to ask, you know, put a letter together, ask DOT to pause where they are in the design, ask them to give us some information on these other alternatives in conjunction with looking at Route 28 and looking at the corridor with putting in any of these other alternatives as well as this. Because once, as you heard, once they go and, you know, and go further than their design now, that's sort of it, you know? So I don't think that we're, we're listening to the residents either in this town, you know? And I think all of the residents that I've heard from, they all cherish safety, but they're also concerned about, you know, travel and getting out of their driveways. And I think that, you know, as I heard, you like that design, but you don't travel that road in, in all fairness. I mean, we're talking to the residents that live there, residents in this town. This is, I mean, I can't remember ever seeing 17, 1800 people on, on a petition. That's pretty amazing and very quickly too. So I just, I guess I would urge my fellow board members to really consider this and seeing if we could send a letter asking them to pause further design, have them look at the whole thing and have them get back to us on those other things that they cite in here. Why are the left turn lanes not good? Years ago, they were going to do those over there. I remember that. So, and in some places, you know, I know that there are some places that use roundabouts, but there are some places in the state, they're getting rid of them too, you know, because they're confusing as well. And there are other reasons. It's, it stuffs up traffic and whatever. So I think there's a fine balance. We want safety, but we want to make sure that we're not packing everybody up so they can't get out of their home and out of their streets. So I think I would really urge our board, excuse me, our board to consider doing a letter like that.
So, so, so I'm in favor of, of preparing a letter and voting on a letter, but I do have a couple of more questions. And that is on the short term improvements. Back in February, and Mr. Bartis, Bartis mentioned some of the improvements back in February. I think those improvements were mentioned. And then it said that the, February 6th, the MassDOT is currently, currently is reviewing additional short term improvements for implementations. Are there, is there a, sorry, a review of additional short term improvements? And just as a, as a reference there, there was a, there was a question before about whether we're going to find out that there's additional, there are additional crashes. I can tell you just from anecdotal evidence that about a month ago, it appeared there was a crash there just about every week. And so it seems like not only have the crashes not abated, it seems, and again, I don't have the data, but just from anecdotal evidence, it seems like they are continuing. And someone's going to die because it's continuing. Someone is going to die. So, so my question is, what more can we do in the short term? If we need to take a look at the long term, what more can we do in the short term to make this safer? And, and can we do a signalized option in the short term? Right? Can we, can we, can we do that in the short term to, while we figure out whether a roundabout works? Is there a way to do a short term signalized option to, to improve things? So that's, that's my que, I guess that's a lot of editorial comments, but the first question is, what, what are the additional short term improvements that you're reviewing? And two, could we do a signalized option in the short term in order to make it safer while we're working on the long term solution?
Yeah, so Howard Stein Hudson is not looking at short term improvements for the intersection right now. MassDOT District Six, I know, is aware of, you know, everything that's being discussed and what we've heard and we've been in coordination with them. I think they would have to approve any short term option at the intersection. I think there are short term measures that could be implemented, but I think that the district would have to analyze them and understand the potential ramifications of any short term solution that goes through. So, you know, I certainly don't want to speak for them. But I think, you know, right now, I believe they were looking into some potential options at the intersection, but I, I don't have details on that. And I know that, you know, their hope is that some of the larger concerns discussed will be taken care of through that corridor study.
And can I just ask, without, and I know you, you can't say what DOT is looking into, doesn't sound like, can you tell us what other short term solutions there could be? In a vacuum, not, I'm not asking you to tell me what they're looking at, just if there were other short term solutions, what could they be?
I think if you were to look at short term solutions at the signal, you could be looking at, you know, signal timing or phasing improvements, things to try to mitigate the crash trends that are happening right now. But I think any way that that is accomplished will likely have some significant operational impacts as well that could go into the South, which is an environmental justice community. And I know that that's a consideration, you know, in any change that's made here.
Anything else? Any other potential short term solutions? Just hypothetically.
I know that the previous road safety audit that was performed did outline some different short term roads, solutions at the intersection. And in general, I know that the D6 traffic engineer is, is aware of those and.
All right. Mr. Bartis, are you aware whether the DOT, so Howard Stein Hudson, Hudson's not looking at short term, any other short term improvements? Do we know if the DOT is looking at any other short term improvements? Because, and again, just as an editorial comment, or as a, I think a factual comment, this is not going to be done for 18 months, 18 to 24 months at the earliest. So if it's not going to be done for 18 to 24 months, what can we do in the short term to try to make this safer, which is everyone's goal? I know it's your goal too.
I think one of the issues is the biggest safety part of the roundabout is the fact that it's circular and you're slowing people down. So that's a big jump to do the roundabout versus any kind of signal alternative, even the other ones with left turn lanes. So that's why the fatalities and stuff could still happen because they're happening at night when people are speeding extremely fast, right? So that'll still occur all the time.
Okay. So, so, all right, so let's step back. Is the DOT, do you know if the DOT is reviewing any other additional short term improvements?
No, because it typically wouldn't go through me. It could go through the district like we talked about.
No, you don't know?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay. All right. All right. Mr. Zullis?
Yeah, Mr. Zullis, sorry. Sorry, just a, just a quick question on the sort of alternatives in the, in the meeting, because I think, I think Mr. Zullis has hit on a really important point, that, you know, lives are being lost at this intersection, even if everything goes ahead as you, your dream, you know, intersection happens, 24 months, you know, I think we're, I think, you know, several lives will be lost by then. It dangerous, other dangerous intersections like this in the state, particularly when they involve a state highway, do you coordinate with Massachusetts State Police to ask for maybe speed enforcement, particularly late at night speed enforcement?
I think there is some coordination, but I, I don't have experience doing that myself.
I think we might want to consider adding something like that to a letter that we send in, I think really looking at all alternatives. You know, so, and it's not alternatives, but sort of short term mitigation that we can, we can implement would be great.
Ms. Musto.
Yes, I was also going to add that I know that, or I believe that the town under Senator Timmeltie had some extra funding for Route 28 and 138 for patrol. So that's another thing. And I also just wanted to also bring up, Mr. Chair, if we could make sure that we have them, somebody, preferably the transportation person come to that intersection, because I believe, there was some reference at one of our previous meetings that there was a meeting there, but that was with the previous board. I know I didn't go there. Did you go there? Yeah, so I, and you wouldn't have. So I, I think that was a previous board, if I'm not mistaken. So I think they should, we've asked that in October, as I recall. And here we are in June and that still hasn't happened. And then they've continued with the design. So, you know, that's another thing to just please add.
Other comments or questions? So, so, so we can go around the table. I'm in favor of sending a letter, getting more information, some of the things that Roxanne pointed out, and finding out what we can do in the short term to try to improve things.
Does that require a motion? Does it require most of motion to?
So, so I think, it doesn't require a motion, I don't think, right now, because we need to have something in front of us to vote on, right? So what I was going to suggest is that someone might want to take the laboring oar to work with the town administrator, put together a letter. I don't know, Ms. Musto, you want to do it?
Sure, I'll work with Mr. Milano on that.
If, if, if that's, if there's a consensus view here.
Yeah.
So, so, and then at our next meeting, we'll have something to work with. And I, you know, I have some notes and, and might send you some thoughts that you might consider and put in via the draft and others may as well. All right. So, so we'll do that. So we'll have it for the, our next meeting in, what's the date of the next meeting?
July 11th, I think.
July 11th and maybe before that if, if we can. This is, this is certainly timely. Any other comments, questions for our guests or, or generally? Ms. Musto.
I just, sorry, I just wanted to just make sure. So are we looking at asking them to pause it and look at other alternatives as well as evaluating this?
My, my view is include that, include that in the letter.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll discuss it.
Well, then I guess I would think that we'd want to do that sooner than later, because if they're still progressing on this design, you know, I would think that we'd want to get it sooner.
So that might, so if we can schedule a meeting, I mean, it would be, next week, the fourth is on Tuesday, conceivably, we could, if you had something together, draft together, we could meet at the end of next week.
Like a quick Zoom or something just to approve a letter?
I'd be remote, but I, I could do it.
We could do that, sure.
Yeah.
So we'll ask, we'll ask Mr. Milano to try to schedule something on this one.
Okay.
If I could ask one question? So it's just, it's informative for us and for the town. And then even as we put together something that, you know, one of the tensions with, with Randolph that have coming into the town is that it funnels so much traffic into Milton that's not necessarily stopping in Milton. It's, you know, it's traffic to get through the town. And that is going to be a tension we see keep showing up over and over again as you look at potential safety improvements, because our understanding is that MassDOT has been holding on to that that volume being really important. So as you're progressing into this corridor study, is one of your goals to maintain the volume targets that this road provides? Or would MassDOT be looking at ways to reduce that volume, reduce the burden on Milton's traffic? That also might increase safety along the whole corridor. So that's just something that might be helpful for us to understand as we prepare comments back.
Yeah, a specific goal of the study is not to maintain the existing volume on the road. But I know that the district is sensitive to the fact that when you reduce the capacity, the volume does divert to other areas and they are interested. And they are interested in where that diversion might occur and what other roadways that have other safety concerns or communities might be impacted by that change. So I think that's something that would be looked into and, you know, sought to be understood. You know, what would the ramifications of a change like that be in other areas? And, you know, where would we be sending people instead?
Thank you, thanks.
I, I think it's fair to say that we want a safe road. We want the state, the state has a road going through our town. We want it to be a safe road for our residents. But we also want it to be a road that works for our residents. And so I think that's generally what you're hearing. We want a safe road, and that's critically important because people are getting hurt, and, and, and that needs to happen soon. But we need a road that works for our residents as well. And so that's what, I hope you take that back. And we'll, we'll follow up with, with a letter and tell you what, what we think specifically is important. And, but I hope you listen to it, and I hope you help us. Because, you know, it's, you know, we'd like to work together and improve this for our, for our residents. Thank you. Anyone, anything else? I don't need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming, and sorry to keep you so late.
Thank you, you're welcome. Not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, pardon me, item six is discussion update Milton Coalition regarding teen activity. I believe we have Ms. Carles, Chief King, and others here as well, who Ms. Carles will introduce.
Hi, everybody, Margaret Carles, Nineteen Gibbons Street, also the co-director of the Milton Coalition. So we focus on youth substance use prevention as well as promoting mental health. And really, I'm here today to bring a really critical issue to your attention and to the attention of the public. And we're going to start off by having Tony Will from the Cunningham Park Foundation Board describe what's going on in Cunningham Park, and as well as Chief King. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony.
My name's Tony Will, I live at two three four Randolph Avenue. I'm currently the chairman of the Cunningham Foundation. And without going into the entire history of the entity, the foundation was created by Mary Cunningham's will in nineteen oh four. She left an endowment with the instructions to her trustees to use the money for the benefit of the inhabitants of Milton. And the trustees quickly bought the estate, which is now Cunningham Park. And for over a hundred years, close to a hundred and thirty years, the trustees of this trust have managed that park property for the benefit of Milton residents and without, we have, as you all know, baseball fields upon walking trails that really are, come to the town at no cost to the taxpayers. The, the underlying purpose of the park, per Mary Cunningham, was to provide benefit to the town sort of through healthy and recreational activities. What's happening at Cunningham Park these days on a lot of weeknights and weekend nights with teen activity and trespassing is the opposite of our mandate. This morning, I was sent a video, a cell phone video that was taken very recently in Cunningham Park and in the woods at night, a bonfire going. And this short clip is just a hellscape of teens out of control, fighting, there's a brawl going on, that's largely what the video captures. Vicious brawl. And at the end of the video clip, a knife is shown by one of the kids in the park. So any Milton parent who clings to the notion that a night in the woods in Cunningham Park is some rite of passage needs to wake up to the reality of what's going on there. It's dangerous, and it represents a threat to the future of Cunningham Park. Our endowment pays for the management of this park, but it just barely pays for it. We don't have, there's a lot of deferred maintenance around the park, tree work, et cetera. And one successful personal injury lawsuit against the foundation would completely upend the finances of the park. So in addition to hoping that parents will step up and take more responsibility for their children, their teens, discouraging activity in the, in the woods, they should also think it is a chance to help protect a really valuable asset to the town, which is a park that has managed to, to operate for a hundred and thirty years. But I feel as though we're getting to a tipping point. The activity in the park is fundamentally different from what it was a generation ago, probably even twenty years ago. The other thing I've learned from Chief King is that where there used to be teen gatherings, teen activity at Turner's Pond, or Kelly Field, or, or parking lot here or there, that activity is all becoming concentrated in this one venue. And we're the reluctant hosts for activity like this. And that, that hosting activity represents a potential liability that is untenable. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Will.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. You know, I agree basically with everything Tony said. I, I think Cunningham Park's an amazing resource for everybody in this community. And, you know, my whole career, there's been problems with kids up there. It's not an easy challenge, it should be, but it isn't. And it's definitely got worse, as Tony indicated. You know, there's a lot of reasons for that. But the concerning trends we see is, you know, I don't want to say it's been condoned, but it seems to be condoned more and more by parents and, you know, people that at least sometimes the majority did not condone it, and there was a smaller group, I feel like a larger number now seem to condone this or not have a serious issue with it. Things have gotten worse in terms of, you know, like he said, there's, there's been some violent incidents up there. It's never a good idea to have hundreds of kids drinking. There's accidents, there's fights, there's, there's major problems up there. You know, it's also just a nuisance for calls for service. You know, we are up there, if it isn't bad weather, every single weekend. You know, the data is astronomical, like, unless it's torrential rain. But even in the cold, you know, they, they drop off pallets early in the day, they light, light very large bonfires. And you, they'll be out there in February, January, you know, it's really shifted. You know, that's a difficult area to police, you know, and it sounds easy, just, you know, send a bunch of cops up and, you know, grab them all. It, it's not that easy for a multiple number of reasons. You know, that, that area just morphs, it morphs into granite links. And, you know, we'll go to the crater, they'll run into granite links. And, you know, you have a million cops in Cunningham Park, and they'll move over by Lyman Road. You know, it, it's kind of like a cat and mouse game. You know, before, if you were walking in, when I was a young patrolman, you'd walk in the path and you'd grab some kids. You could get them and shoot them out and keep going up to the group, and nobody would know you're coming. Now you can't do that, and one second, a text message goes to that whole crew, they know you're coming. You know, you can't really drive in there, you know, I credit the foundation. They talked about clearing land so that we could drive in. And, you know, I credit them, you know, they don't want to upend their land, like a lot of people enjoy it, walking and hiking up there and walking their dogs. But even if they did that, the reality is, these kids will hear the engine, they'll see the headlights, you know, you can't be driving in there in the dark. So they still get a heads up and take off. And, you know, a lot of technology things, cell phones has made it easier for them to avoid us or tip off their friends. You know, parents dropping off their kids, I mean, I don't know who in their right mind would do that, but parents do it. Uber has changed things, I think that's a lot of the reason it's so concentrated there, where it used to be spread out through our town. You know, you'll have four kids sharing Uber, they live in town, it's minimal, minimal cost. And if you go up there by the Girl Scout House on any Friday or Saturday night, there'll be a line of Ubers picking up kids, dropping off kids. It's just made it so easy to go to that one particular location. But there's a lot of problems, kids get hurt up there. And, you know, you know, there's really two types of dangers. There's a danger from, you know, fights and people falling in the dark and stuff like that. And then there's just that long term effect on their development, both their, you know, mental, physical health, that these underage kids are drinking alcohol, you know, smoking marijuana and doing these things in the woods that, there might not be a tragedy that night, but, you know, what's the long term effects of that? So, you know, we're, we're trying to raise awareness, you know, we do police it pretty heavy. We don't tend to arrest every kid, you know, we, we make arrests every summer. You know, we average about a dozen arrests every summer. Usually they're kids who are more of a problem. But we trespass a lot of kids, we work with Dave Wogan, the manager of the parks. And if we identify kids, I give them that information, and they know trespassing from the park. We started doing that a few years ago, and that has helped. You know, we do that probably, you know, twenty five, thirty five kids a year. But there's hundreds of kids, it's tough to catch them. And especially if you don't get the support, maybe, you know, we bring a lot of kids home to their parents and give them the opportunity to rectify it, and some are very responsive, but a lot of hunting those same kids are back to fall on the weak. So it's an ongoing situation we're trying to deal with. I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I'm having to answer questions.
Let me just add a few things. So we had a coalition meeting on the thirteenth. And every coalition meeting, we have sector reports where different people, members of our coalition report about their sector, whether it be business, or healthcare, or parents, or. This coalition meeting was particularly about the woods. And we had parents speak, and we also had the education sector speak. And what struck me about the parent presentation is the profound impact the woods and the lack of alternatives has on families and friendships. Some of the quotes that we heard that night was, "I didn't realize how drastically the woods would contribute to the loss of friendships and status for teens based on whether or not they choose to go. It's considered a rite of passage. What other opportunities are there? What risk mitigation can we provide?" Also, the woods provide them with a sense of belonging. I mean, these kids are going for a reason. I mean, I've heard so many quotes from kids saying, "I don't want to drink, but I want to hang out with my friends," you know? And not all kids in Milton drink or do drugs, you know, it's a, it's a minority. Caregivers worry about their children socially, especially after COVID. When seemingly the only socializing going on is in the woods, parents feel conflicted. I've been in that position of worried about my child not having friends for years and maybe just wishing someone would invite them to a party, you know? It's, it's heartbreaking to listen to these stories. And it's going on throughout the generations in all Milton families that are raising children. Some passively or actively condone going to the woods, accept the risk, and send the message of this behavior is okay. Some hold the line, it can be heartbreaking when it means their kids are missing out on important socialization time. We also heard from Mr. Mack, the Assistant Vice Principal at the high school, who is, maybe most of you know, is the enforcer and knows what's going on. The police, you know, they have their reports, but they often don't hear the whole story. Often, Mr. Mack hears the whole story. And it's, these are a few things that he said at our meeting. "There's absolutely no reason kids should go to the woods beyond substance use, verbal, physical, emotional, and sexual assaults happening regularly there. There's no supervision, other than older kids that drink. The woods have been around for decades, but this is not the same game. Things have evolved. The difference between now and past generations that there is visual evidence. Kids cannot get away from the mistakes that they made because of internet and social media, as the chief said, Ubers and, and other things. We have to change this rite of passage mentality, not only with the woods, but other things like scavenger hunt." What he describes that these kids are doing and doing to each other is just shocking. He sees the fallout. He finds out about the burns, the broken bones. He sees pictures and video of fights, of kids passed out, being abused by their peers. He sees the drawings of a penis on a student's head the next day. Like, this is, I feel like we're waiting for something horrible to happen. I feel like a kid is going to die if we don't really address this. And as a coalition, we're committed to working with Tony and the board, along with Chief King and others, on some immediate strategies that will make Cunningham Park Woods less appealing, a less appealing place to hang out. I also praise the board, they've been, they could have gone at this at a much different and more aggressive way. But we've been working together for months and having really great dialogues of not only the woods and the, the liability that they may face, but also the safety of our kids, both physically, mentally. We've talked to Chief King, like, what would happen? Like, if we could magically close down the woods and kids went elsewhere, would you worry about that? And he said, "Those other places are kind of easier to police, you know, easier to patrol." But we are also thinking about this, a, a long term strategy around changing the culture around youth alcohol use in Milton. We think Milton is ready. We think Milton has to be ready. We no longer need families growing up in Milton thinking that the woods are inevitably going to be a part of their teenagers' lives. No more rite of passage, no more, "I did it when I was their age." No more kids will be kids. We need to all come together as a community and work on this change before someone dies. We think Milton is ready, and we think, and we hope the leaders of our town will help support us in this endeavor. And I just want to put out there the email address for the Milton Coalition, in case there's anyone out there who would like to contact us, willing to help, willing to tell stories, anything really. So the, our email address is info@milton-coalition.org. Thank you very much, and we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Margaret, thank you, Margaret, thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. Will. Comments or questions from the members? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It, it is a major problem. My daughter graduated two years ago, and some of the videos that I saw that was happening two years ago with the fires and the kids jumping over the fires were scary, very scary to me. I think one thing that we aren't talking a lot about is the sexual assaults that are happening up there. There's a lot of sexual assaults that are happening. I know firsthand that they're happening. And these young girls don't know what to do. They are sitting there, their peers are encouraging them to do things that they don't want to do. And if they don't do it, they are ostracized, and ostracized horribly. I didn't let my daughter go to the woods during COVID, and it was her entire social life collapsed and collapsed. She had no more friends, everybody made fun of her. Her father and I didn't want her going anyways, but it was, what else are we supposed to do? I can tell you that I am willing and able to do anything to stop this, the sexual assaults. And it's, it's interesting that Mr. Mack was the one that, that talked about it, because he does here. He is the one that knows. And, and it's not okay, what's happening to our young girls up there and possibly our young boys, I don't, I don't know if they are also being pressured. I'm only speaking from my own personal experiences up there with family members. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry that this has gotten to this point. I thank you for bringing it to us, and I am willing to get my lawn chair out and sit up there if that's what it needs to happen. I don't know what the answer is, but I, I one hundred percent hear you and want to help you. And I also want to help, and I don't know how we do this, but help the young girls that have been sexually assaulted over the last three years. I, I know handfuls of them, and I don't know what to do. And they've come to my house, and they've cried, and, and so here we are. And it is, it is an issue, and, and thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry that they, they, we, all of us have a part in this, have destroyed that beautiful land, because it is gorgeous. And really, I'll bring my lawn chair and I'll sit there. But I think it's going to take all of us. So thank you, thank you for bringing it. And please, please help guide me personally and guide us as to what we, our next step should be.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Zul?
Obviously, thank you for coming forward and for raising this issue and for beating the drum on this issue. And, and I, you know, was unable to come to the coalition meeting, but I, I read about it, followed along, and, and I've spoken with Ms. Carles. And this is, I a hundred percent agree that this is a tragedy waiting to happen. A hundred percent agree. And so I, I, you know, it's like, what kind of questions do you have other than, "Oh, my God, what do we do about this?" You know, so I think just a couple of, of quick questions, and I, and I, and I'll, I'll end with a quick thought, too. You know, in terms of the, the fact that. You know, in terms of the fact that Rideshare apps are driving this attendance, I'm curious about whether or not we can outreach to the Rideshare apps and let them know about particular locations or ask them to flag particular locations. I don't know if something like that could be done, but it seems to me like if there was liability for Cunningham Park, there would also be liability for Uber if it was found that they were facilitating knowingly facilitating rides for kids. You know, if four kids, you know, with a 24 pack of beer get into your car, none of them look a day over 16. It seems to me like there'd be some liability there. So I don't know, Chief, if or anybody else has thoughts about following up with the Rideshare apps?
We've tried that without great, we have tried that without great success, you know? In fairness to them, they're like, how do we differentiate that from the kid who's leaving his baseball game for a legitimate purpose? And I agree, obviously the kid's bringing in a 30-pack after you arrive. But we found it's almost easy to hold the Uber specific driver accountable in that situation as opposed to the company because there are kids, legit busy parents, say, take an Uber up to your, your street hockey league and take it back. And so in fairness to the company, you know, that's probably valid. They have trouble distinguishing that. Also, like some of those addresses, the kid could be standing on the corner of Fuller's Lane and Barnes. Is that the resident of that house who's calling for an Uber? You know, like it's easy for us to say, you know, who loved a Friday night and one type of thing, but you know, I think in fairness to the company, these are all independent drivers and stuff like that. So the way we've tackled it is more without success with the company, not that they weren't cooperative in fairness to them, was go after maybe the drivers like, hey, this kid's clearly 15 and you're letting him put beers in the car and kind of go after that driver for, you know, having open containers in the car or stuff like that.
And then, thank you. I think I'll be doing a little bit of research myself to figure out if we can, if there's another way to approach these, these apps because I find that, you know, they often use the drivers or independent operators umbrella to get out of a lot of things, including paying health insurance for the drivers. But in terms of the parents who are allowing this and in some cases facilitating it, are there criminal charges that are possible for parents who are knowingly endangering children by providing them with alcohol and giving them rides to dangerous locations?
Sure, that's easy to do in the case if you catch them providing the alcohol. You know, what's tricky is, you know, they're giving them the ride up. The alcohol was dropped up earlier in the day by other kids in a car and then they bring the car home and other kids are going up that night. People chip in and you know, you don't see every kid carrying up alcohol. I wouldn't say there's a huge number of parents dropping their kid with beer in their hand. But you're dropping your kids to go up a path at nine o'clock on a Friday night. They may not be drinking and I'll say in fairness, some of these kids aren't drinking. There really is an enormous pressure to be there.
Of course.
And I'm incredibly sympathetic to that. So, you know, I don't want to casually say just keep your kids out of the woods. I know it's not easy. You know, you don't want your kid to not fit in or have something to do. It creates other mental stress and stuff like that, anxiety and stuff. So it's a tricky situation. We have, you know, I wouldn't say we're zero tolerance with kids drinking. We're not arresting every kid. Our goal is get them home to the parents, get them help. I don't believe in zero tolerance for that. I will say this, with zero tolerance on a parent providing alcohol to, you know, other kids and stuff. They can provide it to their kid in their own house under law, but they can't, you know, buy for their kid and their friends and send them off into the woods. We would have zero tolerance for that. We've always charged those parents.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. And so just a quick sort of follow-up thought then. You know, we'd heard earlier about kids that are watching this and parents that are watching these programs with their kids. We have currently openings on the Youth Task Force Committee that are available for high school kids and we don't have any applicants yet. Surprisingly enough, my kids don't respond well when I tell them to tell their friends to do things. We need kids to step up and help be leaders in this space. And I know that they're doing it on the Coalition. We'd love to have them on the Youth Task Force as well. This is how we, as a, as a local government can come up with alternatives and suggestions to government that are driven by the kids. So if you have a high school kid or if you are a high school kid that's watching this, I would encourage you to reach out, learn about the Youth Task Force, think about applying as a member to it. We have openings available and we would really appreciate their presence and, and their opinions. Because we can't change the culture unless the kids are on board with it and the kids are helping to drive it. And, and, and so I really would hope that somebody, some folks out there would consider joining the Youth Task Force. I don't know, Ms. Carles, if you want to add?
Yeah, no, thank you very much, Mr. Zoll. I also want to say that one of the first things that happened, and hopefully you all read the letters that were in the Milton Times. The Cunningham Park Foundation Board wrote a letter and the Coalition followed up two weeks later. And one of the things that you didn't say, I don't think I said, but there is no trespassing in Cunningham Park at night. That is not allowed. So that's the first thing. But then we also have to deal with a very, very complex issue of youth alcohol use and drug use. So a couple of different things going on here, so.
Thank you. Ms. Mustang?
Thank you. I was going to say thank you for bringing this forward. I remember hearing certain cases of parents dropping their kids off and bringing them dinner, like giving them dinner and say, I've heard a couple of cases where the parents would give them dinner and say, hey, here you go, for the night, you know, hang out. So I think, you know, getting more information to the parents as well to take some responsibility as well as the children. And I think, actually I have a question. Is there any lighting up there or cameras? Because I'm wondering if that would be helpful in any of these sort of problem areas so that maybe you'd get a better handle on who's frequently going up there and then you could, you know, maybe look at that.
We've talked about it, not taking any action on lighting or cameras, just expecting that they'd be quick targets for vandalism. And cameras are interesting if, in fact, cameras, if the images you capture could be used in some manner, if, if, if coaches would keep kids off of a team after seeing them in Cunningham Park or something. If there was some ramification or consequence for being there, then cameras would be quite useful, but that's the short answer is we just figured that we'd be putting money, wasting money and seeing them broken out, but if someone has any information to suggest that'd be helpful, we'd certainly look at it. We're open to all suggestions.
Just following up recently on networks and I did do some work prior to Tony's time there with the prior Bruce Alexander and Dave Walkman on expanding the cameras. An issue that surfaces in that area with cameras is if you put them below the tree line, so you get good images of the kids, you get bad signal. Because these are high-wired, so they work off like a satellite, you get a bad signal. If you put them higher in the tree line to get the better signal, you don't get the good image of the kid. It's just the logistics of the woods. So what we did, and I will say this improved it. It's not catching, say, the chaos in the woods, but we did expand onto Patricia Drive. We did expand one up at the Red Bond. What that helped with is like the bonfires. People would come up during the day whose family member has a pickup truck or a small dump truck and they would dump 30 pallets and kids would drag them to the woods and then that truck leaves. But that was actually current at like three in the afternoon, not nine o'clock at night. So everything's like pre-set up for the parties. Like those cameras help with that. We were able to recognize license plates, then follow up, charge them with like illegal dumping, which put an end to what our bigger concern was the brush fires and a big brush fire up there or things like that. Or in the winter nights, it wouldn't be warm, the kids might not party that night. So it has helped that expansion of cameras put that ideal like at the scene, like the best you can get is some of those like, you know, hunter cameras, they're not that good. And the good cameras we have, the trees really create where you either got to put it below the tree line or above. And whichever one you do, you kind of lose the value the other way.
Let me just also say to parents that are listening, like, we really understand, you know, every child's need for feeling like they belong and having friends and going through that whole developmental process of being a teenager. Like, we get it. But to parents, these are not kids just hanging around a fire pit. That's not what's going on. And I've heard, I don't know if we can confirm it or not, but there are kids coming there from Dorchester, from Quincy and from other towns and there are fights and it's, it's really astonishing if you see video of what's going on there and parents should know this. Like I thought, can we have a blog in the paper that says like, this is what's happening in the woods this week? So that parents of even like third graders and fourth graders know, like this is, this is not normal. This is not behavior that we should be condoning. We need to change the culture. And I could go on and on, but I'm not going to. But, um, thank you.
Let me ask, oh, I'm sorry, Roxanne.
No, I'm fine.
Let me ask, is there anything specific that's come up in, in the Coalition meetings that we can do? Apart from the schools, the schools, I'm sure you've, I'm sure you've been to the school committee and you talk about what you can do through the high school, but is there anything that we can do either through, you know, recommendations from the Coalition or working through the Youth Task Forces, or anything that we can do to try to improve the situation and work with the foundation to try to improve the situation?
Yeah. Like I said, we came here just to bring your attention to this problem. And we are going through kind of what the Coalition discussed. We have seven strategies that we look at these problems through, you know, from providing information all the way to changing and modifying policies. And we hope to get a group of people together, not only Coalition members, but residents to look at those with us. I would love to see a massive listening session in the fall and get parents and students and people to come and talk about this issue. We need to bring it out in the open. We need to tell the truth about what's going on there. We need boys and girls, men and women to know what could happen, you know? Teenagers are attracted to dangerous situations, you know, like we need to figure out where else they can be and what else they can be doing. So don't worry, I will be in touch.
Anything else from the members? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and be in touch.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Item seven, discussion approval of the animal shelter building project, project site selection request for proposals. We have received a memo dated June 21st from the, the, our Milton Animal Shelter Building Advisory Committee. Noting that the members of that committee voted unanimously at their June 21st meeting to request the board's consideration of issuance of an RFP for construction of a shelter on the access road to the old landfill. The RFP would be revised upon our approval updating dates for the different stages of the bid process. And we are being asked to support this request and we have with us Mr. DeGais from the committee. So, Mr. DeGais.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So it's been discussed here numerous times about pursuing parallel tracks, one with the Governor Stoughton site and one with the access road site. As you know, we've, we've had a proposal waiting to go probably since end of March, early April. But when we were notified about the additional generous possible gift for the Stoughton site, we put our attention to that. We had a site meeting. We located a, the building on the site. I think we provided you with a very diagrammatic site plan with the animal shelter and the affordable housing, just to show how it might work. The work plan has been started. Mr. Milano, I think at the last meeting, was going to provide an appraisal of what that site might be worth to incorporate into the work plan. But in the meantime, we thought it might be best to put the access road out to site as, out to bid as well. If something should break in the meantime, that's something that we can take a look at, meaning break in terms of the Stoughton site because as it was noted, it's a very generous gift and one that we don't want to quickly turn away from. But at the same token, it's practical, not knowing kind of what the outcome is going to be. It could take months, years for the AG to decide. And I fully agree with, I think it was Mr. Zoll at the last meeting, thought that there had to be, you know, a master plan indicating, you know, sophisticated master plan indicating number of affordable units, animal shelter, AG approval. Again, that could take a long time. So we thought, parallel track, let's put this out to bid and see where it goes.
Thank you, Mr. DeGais. Comments or questions from the members? All right. So we have it on. If we want to have a motion to issue the RFP.
I'll make a motion to issue the RFP.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, all who's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We don't have to.
Oh, nobody's online.
We don't have to go. We're online. All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. DeGais, you can report back to the committee that we have approved it and I guess we'll work with Mr. Milano just to work out the details to get it out.
Great. We have a meeting on Thursday, I believe, midday, noon or one? One, okay. Aaron's been attending faithfully. So yes, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeGais. Sorry, sorry for the wait.
It's quite all right.
Item nine, School Building Committee update regarding the evaluation of land at Blue Hill Avenue, Brush Hill Road. Is Mr., Mr. O'Rourke, thank you.
He's joining now, yep.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. O'Rourke. Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to provide a brief overview of the Brush Hill Road property. The School Building Committee has been looking at since essentially right after town meeting. We were made aware of it early May. Since then, the School Building Committee has toured the site with a number of our participants. And we've held essentially two meetings. The first meeting was done after that site walk, just to kind of give an update to the other members that weren't able to attend the site walks. And at that time, we kind of walked through high level, what the property was and where, where it occurred and some of the logistics with it. Our committee at that point took it, took it away, looked at it for about two weeks. Now, one second. You can go right in there. Sorry about that. Our committee looked at it, studied it for about two weeks. And then we just came back about a week ago with some further commentary. We had Glenn Hoffman, who's the architect of our committee, pointed about the select board, take a look and provide some kind of overlays for what we're planning on at Gallow Road to kind of see how it would fit on the site. And when he did that, it basically showed that the building that we were looking to do would fit up there, but the additional parts of the project, parking and playgrounds namely, wouldn't really fit on there. Mainly, the site that they have there is very narrow. It's about 400 feet wide and very long, about 750 feet for the first parcel and an additional 200 to 300 feet for the next parcel. The other one that comes in that made this whole project or the whole site a little tricky is the parcel has a slope differential. So at Blue Hills, Blue Hill Ave, it's at an elevation of 60. Whereas as you go through the site, it goes up essentially over 100 feet as you get to the back of the parcel. So it's a very steep slope as you're going through there. So as we were looking at trying to figure a way to place a building there and then looking at the internals of those buildings, how you ramp it and stuff like that. It just looked a little challenging. So the takeaway, sorry for the long-winded introduction, but the takeaway, what we did is we had essentially a scoring sheet that we did for other parcels that we looked at a long time ago when we were first formed. And the takeaway of our last meeting was, let's take, you know, resurrect that scoring parcel sheet that we had and utilize it on here essentially against what we have at Gallow Road and kind of, you know, weigh the two of them together. And, you know, some of the, some of the criteria that we had on that, walkability, you know, site, how good the site was, location for busing. I'm trying to remember some of the others. I don't remember them all right off the top. location for busing, I'm trying to remember some of the others. I don't remember them all right off the top of my head. But essentially, that was our goal. I take away from our last meeting that we're going to come back with at our next meeting. If you need to, I can pull up slides to kind of show what we looked at at our meetings or even pull the map up to show you the topographical differences.
Comments or questions? Ms. Mustang?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sean, I have a couple of questions. Thank you very much. So you had mentioned that the site is 400 feet in width on the Blue Hill Ave side, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And did you, what size building are you looking at in terms of width? And what are your thoughts on that?
Well, off the top of my hand, I don't know the exact width of the building that we have. But we did have the architect place the building on the property. The key thing that comes up with this property is along that 400-foot width, we have roughly 50-foot zoning offsets on either side. So it shrinks that buildable portion down to about 300 feet. So in that 300-foot window, if you call it that, we were able to place the overall building that we had at Gowl Road. And again, I have a rendering of it. If you need me to happily pull it up so you can see it.
Yeah, Sean, if you can, Sean, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, definitely. No problem. So, and just let me know when it pops up.
Yeah, we can see it, Sean.
Okay. So what you're seeing here is the overall parcel. The yellow hatched area is essentially that 50-foot zoning offset that occurs on both sides of the property. What happens is because the 50-foot offset, what it does is it basically takes away a little under an acre on the right side and a little over an acre on the left side. So overall, the parcel shrinks down from 6.8 acres to about 4.8 acres. But when we took that and we took the overall building that we were looking at there, we looked and saw that we could fit, you know, the true outline of the building in that window. But then we'd have to figure out parking, play areas, and, you know, essentially a fire loop access road around it. The other part too is this takes into, this is a very rough schematic where it basically takes a flat building here. And as I said, the slope changes roughly 100 to 120 feet from this area of the road down here to the end of the parcel up here.
Yep, please go ahead.
Thank you. So are you, the parcel that you're showing us now, is this the entire parcel or is this the Blue Hill Ave section only?
It is the Blue Hill Ave section only. So if I may, let me just see if I can pull up the other one. Yeah, zoom into this one. Makes it a little bit easier. So what happens is the other part of the site walk that we did is there are two parcels. There is a lower parcel here, which is about 6.8 acres and it's on for roughly a little over $7 million, I think. Or $4 million, apologies, $4 million. Yep.
I think it was roughly, I think that was about three.
Three.
I think that was three.
The other parcel is a smaller parcel at the top that has two historic houses on it. And talking with the realtor, the ability to just buy the singular open parcel that we're looking at does not exist at this point. If we wanted to buy the smaller parcel or the larger parcel down here along Blue Hill Ave, we would also need to, you know, buy this smaller parcel that's up on Brushhill Road with the houses on it. So when we looked at it too, we had discussions with the Historical Commission in Milton for what would have to be done for these houses. So I believe we're allowed to, you know, just on state law, we'd be able to demolish them. But I think it would be met with some resistance from the local Historic Commission for that, where they probably want to preserve them. But essentially, to answer your question before, we were only looking down here for replacing the building. If we had to create roadways that would cut through this parcel and then up onto Brushhill Road, for me, just looking at it, as we talked about it at our last meeting, it would be a little bit problematic. Two reasons. One is that's a pretty narrow road, so trying to get buses in and out of that parcel would be kind of tough. And then the stone walls that exist along Brushhill Road right there are also historic. So if we had to demolish them or modify them at some point, it just causes a little more. But essentially, that's the overview of what our committee has discussed at our past two meetings.
Good. Okay, I just have another couple of questions. So on the front parcel you're showing, if you put the school on the front parcel, correct? In that first slide?
Yep.
Okay. So the questions I have on that is what size building square footage and what are the dimensions of that again?
Yeah, so the overall building program size is about 115,000 square feet. It consists of three levels for the middle school and only a single level for the preschool wing. The overall, like, building dimensions, length and width, I don't have specifically, but I can have our architect pull those off and provide them.
My other question would be, you're talking middle school, so how would that compare in size to what we have at Pierce now? In terms of square footage, dimensions, so forth?
Again, on that one, I don't know.
I'm just trying to visually get an idea of, you know, what is Pierce, for instance? What size lot is it in? What are the dimensions, especially if we're looking at this lot?
Yeah, and honestly, at this meeting, I can't answer that because I wasn't prepared for the question, but I can note.
Sure, that'd be great.
Yep, yep. So basically, lot size for the existing Pierce and then the overall building size, overall square footage, and then just basically planned dimensions of length and width.
That would be a great start. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
And I think that'd be useful, Sean, to have for our next School Building Committee meeting because we can discuss that as well. Mr. Zoll?
I coughed into this, so I had to turn it off. I'm not sick, just allergies. Sean, thank you so much for this presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. With the zoning setback, I'm assuming that you can't build roads or parking lots on a zoning setback, that you just have, you can't touch that, is that right?
That I'm not sure about. I have reached out to the town building inspector. Essentially, one, to confirm it's a 50-foot offset based on the size of the building. And then, two, could we build roads and stuff through there? I know specifically we can't put a building there. But as far as roads or access roads, again, I don't know on that. And I was waiting, I was awaiting that response.
And second question on it, thank you. The second question, in terms of the slope of the land, how does that affect the planned building that we've got there? Because, you know, like, I think you said it was 100 foot, 100 foot, so that's several stories, you know? So how does that, how does that affect the layout of the three-story building?
Yeah, my take on it, and I mentioned it at our last meeting, is my guess is it's going to stretch that building out, either make it longer, mainly due to specific ramping that we have to look at it. So the slope, the existing slope that's there is about 11%, which is too much for ADA compliance. So essentially, to do that, we have to build longer ramps from, you know, a couple of our members talking about it. So by doing that, we might, you know, again, the program that we showed there was based on a flat site, which essentially what Gowl Road is. So having a slope site like this, and it's a significant slope, we're trying to look at, you know, taking that 2D image and laying across that slant that's there and look at how we essentially either have to terrace the foundation to kind of build it out and step it up as we're going along. And then how that would affect ramping and stuff in there for students.
Yeah, that was my thought, was that there would be ADA issues with anything that's on a slope side, even an outdoor playground. You'd have to be grading that so that it would be flat, I would imagine, or relatively flat.
Yep.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Other comments or questions? So this is time-sensitive because this is a competitive situation, competitive with the private sector. So I think School Building Committee is meeting, is it next week, Sean?
Approximately the following week.
Following week. All right. So we'll make sure to keep this on the agenda for our meeting to get a report back and see what the recommendation is at that point. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, good night.
Item nine, Milton Broadband Committee update regarding Town INET, including Lower Mills. This is along the lines of an FYI, and I will provide this update. The design of the Town INET is proceeding. And we are fortunate that the consultant that we hired to help select the designer is continuing with us because they didn't reach their amount. So they're continuing to help us to vet the design that the designer is coming up with. One of the issues that came up in our last meeting is that the designer brought up and also that our consultants helping us with the design is that the existing design, the existing Town INET, which we are, we are charged to replace, does not go into Lower Mills. And so the question is, and the question may be, do we want to see what a design would like to go into Lower Mills? Now, we don't have any public buildings down there now, but could we be in the future? There might be businesses to whom we could lease fiber. So what the Municipal Broadband Committee is, plans to do is to spec that out and find out what the additional cost would be to extend the INET, the Town INET, down into Lower Mills. If the board thinks that's a direction we should go in, just to see if, to see what the cost would be, so we have that alternative. So that's the, that's the, that's the report. So we think we want the designer and the committee to at least cost it out and then come back and see, here's what it would be, here's what the INET as intended is, which is the existing footprint with some modifications because some of the buildings have changed, but essentially existing footprint versus the existing footprint plus going down into Lower Mills.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. All right. So we'll proceed on that path and get a cost and see if, see what the additional cost of that would be. Item 10, Discussion Update of Multi-Family Zoning Requirements for the MBTA Communities. We heard earlier about this from some of the public comment speakers. My reason for putting this on the agenda is that the Chair of the Planning Board reached out to me with the same thought on whether this board will want to apply or seek some relief from the MBTA and from DHCD actually on this. And our, the net-net of that call was that we would get together with Mr. Zawinski and see what the evidence of that is and see what the likelihood of that is and see what we could propose. So we haven't, we haven't had the chance to do that yet. Mr. Zawinski was out today. He's online. I don't know if I want to put him on the spot because we do have additional information that's come in today, you know, today from Mr. Humphrey's memo. And so, so my thought is that we would, we'd take that and then come back perhaps at our next meeting with Mr. Zawinski and presenting, you know, what the evidence is that we could point to in order to make an appeal to DHCD on this. So. Does that seem like a reasonable approach? Tim, I, you know, I don't, I see you're online. I don't want to put him on the spot since he was out today. It's, he was out ill today, so I actually don't want to put him on the spot at all. So does it sound reasonable that we'll, I'll get together with Mr. Zawinski, Ms. Hall, and kind of vet the information and see if there's any additional information that we have to make the case that we shouldn't be a rapid transit community, but that we should, we should, we should be considered otherwise. Ms. Mustang?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if at that next meeting, would we have the information, I guess, ahead of time to review? And would it be on for discussion and approval if we want to send a letter at that point? Because I would think that if we go that direction, that we would want to make sure that we are prepared at that meeting. You know, we won't want to delay if we're going to go that direction.
Yeah, so so you're right. In order to send a letter, we'd have to have a letter to consider. The only reason I'm pausing is that would put in the hands of Mr. Zawinski and me and Ms. Hall the drafting of that letter. Before, you've heard the parameters for that, and I'm happy to do it. And happy to perhaps sketch out what such a letter would look like. I think we can do that. I'm just, I'm thinking this through real time. You see this different levels of decision? Do we have evidence? Do we have evidence sufficient to make the case? Should we write a letter? What should be in the letter? So we can collapse all that and say, okay, based on the evidence that we have, this is what a letter would look like, so we can come back next time. Maybe I'm overcomplicating the analysis here, but that's kind of how my mind works. So I think so. I think we can do that. I think we can, we can put together what that would look like. I think that's fair. Mr. Zoll?
I did, I left it on. Sorry. So just two quick things on this. I think I'm, you know, I'm happy to take a look at the rezoning if that's something that makes, you know, if the community is looking at that. I just, I feel obligated to state that Milton has a long tradition of first redlining and housing discrimination. And we are now up to our necks in 40Bs because we refuse to act on affordable housing. And I am very concerned that we are delaying what is going to be compliance with state law. And if we are out of compliance with state law and we're pushing for something, I don't want us to be behind the eight ball if our request to be rezoned is denied and we haven't made any progress. So I would urge us to continue to act as if this is, we are not going to be rezoned so that we are not left holding the bag if they come back, if the state comes back and says that they're not going to reconsider it. Because we are long overdue for a real look at housing in this community, different kinds of housing in this community. I think the MBTA Communities Act is an opportunity to do that in a responsible way. I think this is a Commonwealth-wide issue. And I am worried that Milton is going to continue to have a reputation of obstinately ignoring state law when it comes to housing. And we are going to start paying the cost for it. We're going to see developers buying lots, putting up buildings that we don't agree with because we're out of compliance with state law. That's what we're seeing with 40B housing now. And I worry very much that if we try to delay this, if we try to, try to sort of play the, Milton is a very special community card in this entire Commonwealth, that we are going to be sowing some seeds that we are not going to want to reap later.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Brass?
I just wanted to ask a question. I'm not sure if anybody here knows the answer, but has anybody else, has any other cities or town tried to be rezoned into a different category? And have they been successful in that?
I don't know the answer. Mr. Milano might.
I'll follow up with Tim on that question because I know he's staying in close touch through planners groups. I have been in touch with some of our other regional managers. And I know one community is looking at requesting timeline adjustments. They're in a similar vote as us in terms of having to comply 100% by the end of this calendar year. One of the requests I think they were working on is whether they could have that timeline adjusted. So maybe some compliance this year, some compliance at a later date, but that's a different question of.
They're not looking to be rezoned.
Right. They're going to stay in their classification, but maybe looking for other concessions from the state as they work towards it.
Right. It's just, my time is precious, as I'm sure all of us. You know, we all wear a lot of different hats. And so I'm just, I don't want to see you and the Chairperson of the Planning Board and Mr. Zawinski spend X amount of time writing this to have it be something that we as a board don't even know if it will go anywhere. And I'm just looking at this as a kind of a And I'm just looking at this as a kind of a, how many hours in the day do we all have? And I don't know if that's a task that you would, should, should or would do, only because I don't know what the outcomes are for other towns. There's no matrix here that I can look at as to whether or not DHCD has approved any of the changes.
It's a fair point. But I can tell you, you know, from my perspective, you know, I committed to, to Ms. Hall to try to flesh this out in, in construct, right? Just, and, and so it doesn't take it that much farther from fleshing it out in construct to fleshing it out on paper. So Ms. Mustang?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. I think, you know, I, I took a quick read through the document that was provided for us, and as far as Milton not doing things in the past and whatever, I, I think that, you know, yes, we've learned from that and we have all these 40Bs, they'll have some affordability. I think first of all, we have to look at what's fair and equitable. And is it fair and equitable for us to be considered a rapid transit community when we have a trolley service that even from what I saw in that document that was provided, that the MAPC classified in this growing station areas, the variety potential for transit-oriented development in Metro Boston, they classified Milton as a trolley suburb. So the report recognized that the Matapan Line is unique from other rail systems on the MBTA. So I think, I hear what you're saying, you know, about what's happened in the past and things like that, but I think if we want to be treated fairly and do our fair share, which I think we should, right? I think that we really have to look at that because, you know, putting us in the same category as some of these trolleys that may exist like a Newton or a Workline or a, you know, these other communities that, I'm sorry, that are the rapid transit, I don't see how it'd be the same. It just doesn't seem, according to what I've read, to map that out. I think the other thing is, and this, I hear this a lot because I did get an email recently from someone who said, this is affordable housing, and it's not. It's multifamily housing, right? And there's an affordability component to it. So I think, I've seen several emails that I've received from people talking about multifamily housing with regards to the, sorry, affordable housing with regards to this act. It's not, it's multifamily. So that means 90, at least 90%, because we can, I think, put up to a 10% affordability, if I'm not mistaken, on these, 90% is market rate. So I think that has to be said. But back to the original, so I just wanted to clear that because I've received several emails about what it is. So I think we need to be straight on what it really is. Nobody's saying we shouldn't comply, but we should be treated fairly. And I think we have a unique situation in Milton in terms of we have a trolley service. That's what it is. You know, it's not a commuter rail, okay? It's not the red line, you know, at Ashmont, you're going right in town. It's a trolley service. And that in itself is different than a lot of these other places. And I think it is worthwhile looking at that. And again, it's not to say we're not, like, people say, oh, if it gets reclassified, we're not going to do anything. We're not saying that at all. We just want to be treated fairly and do our fair share. That's how I view it.
And just as a, as a supplement.
Please, go ahead.
Oh, just as a supplement, to the extent that Milton is in a different classification, it doesn't mean that the, the law doesn't apply.
Right.
What it could mean is that there are fewer units and there's more time to comply. And, and, and so, anyway, just, just as, just as.
No, I, I, I recognize all of that, and, and I, I think that those points are well taken. I think that the memo that we have, I have some strong questions about the average weekly boardings, for example, at some of the stops are ludicrously low. I think the numbers are probably wrong. But, you know, I, I, you know, I just, you know, two quick thoughts. One, my daughter started her first job today. It's in Kendall Square, and she's taking the trolley to Kendall Square. So, you know, yes, she has to transfer, but if she was working in, you know, on a different line, she, you know, and she had direct red line access, she still would have to transfer maybe to the yellow or the blue or some, or the orange. So I think the idea that because you have to transfer, you're not a subway, it's clearly the trolley is different from the MBTA, but, you know, those of us who attended the MBTA briefing last, last week, and I think Roxanne, you were on that, they're going to be increasing the capacity for these trolleys. I think we have to act in good faith. That is my, I, I am not opposed to looking at an, you know, a reclassification. What I'm opposed to is stopping the work that we're doing and putting all of our chips on a reclassification. I think we have to act as if the state law is, the way that it's written is the way that it's going to be implemented. And I don't want to see us dragging our feet on implementation because we're putting our hopes on this. That's what I'm saying. I'm, if we get reclassified and we, we're doing it differently, then, then we're doing it differently. But up until that point, I, we cannot stop moving forward with MBTA.
And it's a fair point, and it's a important point. And, you know, I, to look at this, in my judgment, and to give the board something to look at, does not mean that we are stopping on the other efforts. And we do have a town meeting scheduled for early December, and so it'll be, it'll be up to the Planning Board and to this board, because this board can put things on a warrant, the Planning Board and, and this board to decide. So, so it's not, it's not something where, in my judgment, that this, this board will be not paying attention to, just because we're looking at other possibilities. So, so, so I, I think it's fair for, for, for me to, to give us something, me and Mr. Zawinski and, and working with Mr. Zawinski and Ms. Hall and probably Mr. Milano, to give this board something to look at, at our next meeting. And then the board can, 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 there's a lot of different options.
I agree.
A lot of different options, so. All right, anything else on this? All right. Item 11, the discussion approval Class II dealer license renewal, RBM Motor Masters, Inc., DBA Milton Auto Repair, located 944 Ken Ave. Mr. Milano, any, any preface to this?
Sure. In your packets, you have some backup information related to this. This is an existing business that is seeking a renewal of its Class II license that allows them to sell essentially used cars. There were two approvals that are required for this business to be allowed to operate in this location. The first is a special permit for the Board of Appeals because it is a non-conforming use in that district. The applicant has received approval from the Board of Appeals to continue operating this business at this location. And now he, the applicant is before the Select Board for renewal of his Class II license to continue his motor vehicle sales now that his land use approval is squared away. In your packet, you also have a letter from Lieutenant Alba, who conducted an inspection of the facility earlier this year. And as far as everything that we have is, the applicant is a proper person, which is the threshold under general laws to issue this license to this business owner. And they do have the bonding that is required under Mass General Laws for this sort of entity. So the applicant, application is complete and ready for your approval if the board sees fit.
Questions, comments, motions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Class II dealer license renewal, RBM Motor Masters, Inc., DBA Milton Auto Repair, located at 944 Ken Ave, Milton.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 12, discussion approval, committee appointments and reappointments. Item 12A is the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, the appointment of Andrew Schmidt.
I'll make a move to reappoint Andrew Schmidt to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 12B, Keeper of the Lockup. This is a motion to reappoint Chief King as the Keeper of the Lockup.
I'll make that motion for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Local, the item 12C is the local historic district committee reappointments. Larry Lawfer, William S. Mullin, and Mallory Walsh.
I'll make a motion to approve the following individuals to the local historic district study committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. Larry Lawler, William S. Mullin, and Mallory Walsh.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion?
I was just reading it.
Motion been made in second. All is, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Item 12D, this is the Municipal Broadband Committee. I'll say it a bit because I've been on this committee. The, the four members of this committee have been meeting weekly almost for the last couple of years and have made a lot of progress. We now have new IDnet being designed. This group has brought it through to this point. I think it's important to, to get it through to construction, and it will make sense to keep this group available. This group does lack diversity, and this group has been doing it for a while, which is good in one, in one sense, because I think, I think these four members would like to bring at least the IDnet construction through to fruition. However, in order to address the need for some help and some more diversity, perhaps we could talk about increasing the membership of this committee. Currently, there are five members in the, really five members in the charge. We have the charge here. We don't have the membership of this committee, but I believe it's five. So, so anyway, so my suggestion is to reappoint these four individuals, Mark Day, Rob Lynch, John Sullivan, Joe Chamberlain, so they can bring the INET through to conclusion. And I would suggest increasing the, the committee membership up by two to help out the committee so we can, when, when these four and the fifth, me, roll off in the not-too-distant future, we'll have some consistency and some.
Some diversity.
Some diversity and some, some, what do you call it, institutional knowledge as well.
So you need two motions on this, Mr. Chair?
I think, I, I think that's, if that's the way we want to go, the first would be to reappoint those four members, and then the second would be to, to increase the membership. And then we can get more people to apply and more people have.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reappoint the following individuals to the Municipal Broadband Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. Mark Day, Robert F. Lynch Jr., John E. Sullivan Jr., and Joseph Chamberlain.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Want to do the second one?
Yes, please.
Okay, move to increase the membership to the Municipal Broadband Committee to add number here, which we're going to put two, right? Two members and update the charge.
A second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 12E, the Equity Justice, Equity and Justice Committee Appointments. We have two proposed appointments, Ralph Parent and Kenji Mateyer, or Mataya. I apologize if I, I've got that wrong. That's M-E-T-A-Y-E-R.
Okay. I can make the motion to appoint Ralph Parent and Kenji Mateyer to the Equity and Justice for All Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 12F, Appointment to the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee. This is a reappointment of the Parks and Recreation Designee.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reappoint Winston Daley as the Parks and Recreation Designee to the Open Space and Recreation Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 12G, which is the Select Board Landing Committee. And I will say, similar to the, to the, the Broadband Committee, these are reappointments of individuals who've been on for a while, one is a town planner. And I don't see it on our agenda, but we may consider the same, the same idea here, reappointing these members in order to carry through what's being done, but maybe perhaps increasing the number of members on the committee. Maybe we can do that at the next meeting to, you know, bring some diversity and some.
Can we just do that now, or do you want to wait?
It's not, I don't think it's on the, it's not on this agenda, and I don't know.
It's not online.
It's not on.
Okay.
All right, so we'll, we can consider that next time.
Okay, I'll make a move to reappoint the following individuals to the Select Board Landing Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. Richard Burke, Theodore Carroll, and Tim Chuenzki.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Youth Task Force. Here, I believe, we have one appointment.
Five applicants for one.
Five applicants for one appointment.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Zol.
As the representative to the Youth Task Force.
Yes, Mr. Zol.
So I've looked at all five applications. I, I would recommend to the Select Board that we appoint, and I, I don't know her personally, but Christina Lillyhook, for a couple of reasons. One is that she's not serving on any other board, so I think we could count on her full-time. The other is that she is the active parent of a Pierce and a high school student, and I think the, the, the presentation that we heard earlier from the Coalition, I think we could use a high school and frankly, a Pierce parent of a rising eventual Milton High School student to serve on this board. So I would, not to say anything negative against the other candidates, I just think that it's, it's a pretty vital issue, and I would, I would recommend that's who we appoint.
So, oh.
But I'm happy to entertain.
Beyond a recommendation, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I'm happy to entertain.
Any other, any other discussion? Any other thoughts?
I have a question. Mr. Milano, how many, can you just go over what spots are available again?
Sure. So we are seeking, so the membership is three teenage Milton residents, one of whom is a member of the Milton Youth Advocates for Change, three parents are guardians of Milton teenage residents, two members with professional experience in youth programming, one member from the Milton Coalition, one member from the Select Board. So right now, what is open is one teenage resident. It does not have to be a member of the Milton Youth Advocates for Change. That is covered, so just a teenage resident, one parent or guardian, and then a member of the Coalition, and I did mention it to Margaret today about that. So we're still waiting. Somebody from the Coalition, she thought somebody had applied, so we'll double-check and then follow up with her. But for right now, we're looking for one teenage resident, one parent, and the member from the Coalition.
So the follow-up question, I'm wondering if any of these applicants are in the Coalition? Because it would sort of make sense that if one of them is, that that would be the slot we would put them in. And so I guess I would like to find that out first before we do that, because I think that way maybe we have an opportunity for a second person. If, if there's a member of the Coalition that's in that grouping, they could fill that slot, and then you could have a parent, another parent, and then you still have a teenager. So I would like to have some confirmation on that.
Couldn't we assume that they would have listed their membership in the Coalition? I guess you can't assume anything, but, I mean, people have identified if they were on playground committees and other committees. I just, I'm, given the, you know, intensity of this, I think we could, if it turns out that Ms. Lillyhook is a member of the Coalition, then we could maybe assume that that's filled, and then next, in two weeks, we could, you know, appoint a different parent. Could we do that?
Ms. Bradley?
Thanks so much, Mr. Chair.
Sorry for speaking on turn.
No, no, no. It, maybe I'm wrong in this, but it's my understanding that the, that appointment by the commission is theirs to choose on who it is. It may be somebody that's currently on the commission, or it could be somebody just in the community. They, they are the ones that bring that to us for us to affirm, correct?
Yeah, the, the membership is a member of the Milton Coalition. That's the, that's.
So it's not a designee? It has to be somebody?
Exactly.
But that's.
We appoint, we appoint it. It's a member, it just has to be a member of the Coalition.
Right.
And then, and that is, can be separate and apart from the three parents or guardians of teenage residents.
Right. I, I don't, from what I gathered just by looking online earlier when I was looking this over, I didn't see her listed as part of the member of the Coalition.
So, so it's, so, you know, to Mr. Zol's point, if we do move forward and, and Ms. Lillyhook is a member of the Coalition, then, as you point out, they'll have another, they'll have another parent. then, as you point out, they'll have another, they'll have another parent.
Yeah.
They can appoint. If she's not, then they'll be someone recommended by the Coalition.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we, I'm just going to pick the language here. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christina Lillyhook, Lillyhook, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, to the Youth Task Force for a term of one year to expire on June 30th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, Sign Review Committee. Uh, we have two proposers, two proposed appointments.
And, Mr. Chair, there are two, um, openings available on this committee. And they both have been recommended by the Sign Review Committee to be appointed to the Sign Review Committee.
Well, I'll move to appoint, uh, Deborah Azaret, Savona and Larissa Simone to the Sign Review Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, uh, 12J is Community Preservation Committee. Two potential appoint, appointments, we have the Planning Board Designee and then we have our own designee, who was Mr. Uh, Mr. Lavash. And Mr. Lavash has, as we know, um, after his distinguished service, stepped aside. So, we have two proposed names, one is Ms. Tagheas as the Planning Board Designee and we have Kathleen O'Donnell, who's been recommended by Mr. Lavash, pardon me, and who also provided a volunteer application as the Select Board, uh, Select Board Appointee.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Cheryl Tagheas as the Planning Board Designee and Kathleen O'Donnell as a Select Board Designee to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, could I just-
Mr. Mullin.
Suggested a slight revision to the motion that Ms. O'Donnell's term would be, um, the completion of Mr. Lavash's term.
And when is that?
June 2025.
Okay. Do we have to do the whole thing again, or can we just say with that correction?
Yes, yes.
Friendly correction?
I'll second with the correction.
With the friendly correction. Uh, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right. Pardon me, um, item 12K, the Council on Aging Board of Directors, reappointments.
Okay, I'll move to reappoint Robert O'Larry as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026 and reappoint Denise Rockland and John Fleming as associate members for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. 2024? Yep.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 12I, the Committee, Commission on Disability, reappointments. We have one, two, three, four, five, uh, proposed reappointments.
Okay, I'll move to reappoint the following individuals to the Commission on Disability for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026. Fay and Tulio Agostino, Coleman Irwin, Charlene New, Alex Rosenberg and Catherine, Catherine Uptham, Uptham? Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, item 13, discussion, oh, Mr. Mr. Ms. Bradley.
Thanks so much, I just wanted to thank, uh, Nick and others who have been getting the word out about the openings on the boards and commissions. Um, it's really important that all aspects of our town, um, apply and folks that, you know, think that this might be a fun way to give back. Please get your applications and I appreciate Nick, um, for really putting that out there, um, as we do these reappointments. It's always nice to see new blood, um, and new ideas. You okay?
Yeah. Water went down.
New, uh, new ideas, um, that can come to fruition with, with getting some, some new folks in here. So I just want to thank everybody who has applied and, um, and encourage those that haven't to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Uh, item 13, uh, Discussion Approved Grant of Easement to USC LLC Over the Dump Access Road. Mr. Mullin, do you want to frame this for the board?
Sure, the Select Board has, um, reviewed and approved this previously. The, after that, incidentally, the applicant came back with some suggested, um, clarification language in the access easement. Um, it's, it's non-substantive changes, but we did want to bring it back to the Select Board. Attorney Peter McNulty at Murphy has seen Tumi and Lehane to take a look at the changes and was, accepted the changes from the applicant's attorney. So it's, it's ready for the Select Board's approval as well.
Okay, um, I will, uh, propose a motion to move to approve the grant of easement to USC LLC over the dump access road and authorize the town administrator to sign on the board's behalf.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, item 14, this is a discussion approval of two contracts, uh, with respect to two construction projects. Mr. Mullin, do you want to tee up the first one, item 14A, which is the Milton Public Library Handicap Ramp Project?
Sure, the library, um, team and consolidated facilities have been working on, um, a ramp project that'll go from, connect the patios at the library with a accessible ramp. Um, the contract is about $93,000, of which $43,000 will be paid from state aid to public libraries. And the balance of that, about $50,000 will come from library trust fund, uh, monies for the project. This has been bid out and Fulsham Corp. is the low bidder and, um, we're pleased with their view and have them ready to go, um, pending contract approval tonight.
Comments or questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Fulsham Corp., the Milton Public Library Handicap Ramp, uh, project.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Item 15B, contract for the Collicott Cunningham Stormwater BMP. And Mr. Mullin may be able to tell us what BMP stands for.
Yes, uh, Best Management Practice Program, um, for a stormwater project, uh, behind Collicott Cunningham. Um, there's extensive information on the town website about this project that the engineering department has put together. Um, the low bidder again was Fulsham Corp., um, out of Quincy. Uh, the project will be approximately $174,000. 60% of this project is being paid for by state grant program. 40% of it is being paid out of, um, town funds, of which some of that can be in kind. So, um, there is a limited contribution from town dollars towards this project since, um, so much grant money is being used for it. It'll improve, um, it'll install a new, um, stormwater system to catch, um, an inch of drainage, um, moving forward in that area and help, um, alleviate some water issues. And it does have, um, all the approvals and the project is ready to go pending contract approval tonight.
Comments or questions from Mr. Mullin, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the contract with Fulsham Corp. for the Collicott Cunningham Stormwater BMP.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 15, which is the Discussion Approval of the Town Administrator's Annual Performance Evaluation. This is part of the town administrator's contract. Uh, we, um, under the contract, um, our obligation is to do this prior to July 1st, um, to determine whether, um, there will be a certain, um, raise, uh, to his, uh, salary. And so we agreed in a process, uh, a few weeks back whereby each of the members would submit their personal evaluations and Ms. Bradley would consolidate those responses and report them to us tonight. So I will turn it over to Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The questionnaires went out to the Select Board members. We were reminded, I want to say twice, by Lynn to fill them out and, um, return them to Page. Uh, we received three, um, evaluations that were returned. What I ended up doing to put a number with things, we were, there were 49 questions overall that we had to answer. Uh, we answered with either a E, S or I. The E was excellent, outstanding, the S was satisfactory and the I was improvement needed. I gave the E, three points, satisfactory two, and improvement needed one, so that I could score, um, the results and come up with, um, the answers. Of that, uh, Nick knocked it out of the park, as I like to say, in, um, five areas. There were 10 overall, um, uh, areas that we looked into that comprised of the 49 questions. Uh, so the knocking it out of the park was the individual characteristics, relations with Select Board members, policy execution and fiscal management. Um, there was a few comments on the fiscal management that folks were impressed with Nick's ability to get up to speed, uh, having only been in the position for a few months when we hit our first budget. So, um, so there was a lot of praise around that. Kind of the, the middle of the road, doing all right, uh, professional skills, reporting, community and, um, citizen relations. All of those, um, he scored very well. They're just, I had to break them up into three different categories. Um, the, the ones that, that kind of needed the most improvement were staffing and supervision and the responses that folks wrote in regards to that is that there just hasn't been enough time. People, uh, left some of those blank, didn't put any numbers in for that. Um, I'm sorry, I say numbers, but didn't put in an E, S or I, um, for some of those categories because, um, there hasn't been enough time to evaluate that, um, right now. To, to, uh, to, to the people that responded, wanted to make sure that Nick was thanked profusely for, uh, for his ability to get up to speed as quickly as he did. Um, some of the things that were unplanned, that he has shown excellent in, was having to do with the school building committee, uh, union negotiations and the I net work. Um, at the end of the evaluation of the 40, 49 questions, we then all had to give an overall rating. Nick received, uh, two Es and one S or E. Um, so, in the mathematical calculations of that, that comes out to a, an E minus. So it's an E, because we don't have that. Um, so it's all done up in a spreadsheet, I'm happy to share that with members of the board or Page or however I'm supposed to do this, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure what that is, um, but those are the, the three evaluations we got. And, um, I personally just want to say that I have thoroughly enjoyed working with Nick and, um, look forward to what he has to offer for us for the next year.
Comments or questions from the members? Ms. Mastow.
Sure, um, with regards to the process, my, maybe I misunderstood the process a little bit and I, I thought we were giving everything to Page. And, I mean, I rethought the process afterwards, but my understanding of the process up to that point was that we were giving it to Page and then it was going to be compiled into some kind of a document that we would review ahead of time so that we would see if things were, you know, if there were any omissions that we thought should be in it or not. What I heard today is like a synopsis of what you received, but yet I didn't, I personally didn't have a chance to, you know, look at that or maybe finish that or whatever. So I think that we should really talk about going forward, what the process should be. I, my understanding is, you know, we have somebody who's an HR person, we're giving her all the information. Whether she compiles it into a document and then we all review it and then see what, you know, if there's anything, uh, omitted or anything that could be said better, um, before we present it to Nick. I think that would, that would be a suggestion to me. And when I say presented, you know, anyone could present it, but I feel like we need to look at that information first. Because, you know, it would make sense, we have somebody who's hired as HR. She's getting everything together anyway. If she put it together, we'd have the opportunity and it wouldn't put a lot of burden on anybody else to compile it into a document like Erin just did. And then that, then we could all look at it and see, okay, like maybe something Erin wanted to put in it that she put in it was not in it, in the document, or maybe Ben or myself. So that's what I want to talk about is the process.
Yep, it's a fair point and I, I'll just add, um, we do have, what's today? We do have a couple of days this week, we could, we could still post a meeting, pardon me, for Friday. Um, and, and, and so we could get, get, we could have the spreadsheet circulated.
Absolutely.
Um, and then we'll still meet our commitment to do it prior to the, prior to the, uh, end of the fiscal year. So that's a, that's a suggestion. Uh, I think that works, Nick.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I, I think what is valuable to me is, is the feedback. So I think, I don't want to impose upon the board. And I think if the two parties here can agree to, to reconvene on this in July at our next meeting, I'm happy to do that too, to give everybody a little bit of breathing room. And Ms. Mastow the opportunity to get it over and Ms. Bradley the opportunity to prepare it. So it's up, it's up to you. I'm okay with pushing it if that is more feasible for everybody.
The only question is what effect does it have on, on, um, the contract?
Salary.
The closeout.
Right. And we'd have to, well, you can, you can, it's uncomfortable for you to-
No, I'm just trying to do the math in my head.
We have to encumber funds from, from this fiscal year.
It would be cleaner.
I was just going to say, I, I'm not saying, I, I mean, I want to make sure going forward that we do this other process because I think, you know, you're reading some things off and I appreciate that you put it all into a spreadsheet and everything. But I don't know if anything specific that I have is, is reflected in that, you know what I mean? And so, or maybe-
Well, those were just the E, Ss and Is.
But there are also comments that people put in, right? So, yeah, I guess that's my concern, is that I think we should all have that opportunity. Now, again, if it's so late, I don't want to, I don't want to mess things up, you know what I'm saying? But I think going forward, the process really should be that we have somebody that's in a hired role that could put everything together. We review all of the data that's pulled together, maybe we put it into a certain document or if somebody wanted to do that, but I mean, we need that opportunity to review it before it's presented to him.
Yeah.
You know?
And, and, and it's a fair point and, oh, sorry, just, just one more thing to add and that is, and, and maybe this wasn't made clear, part of what we can do tonight is give comments directly in a public setting, because that's what we're supposed to do, to do it in public. We can give our own individuals comments, um, comments in addition to the numbers, comments to Nick tonight. So, Mr. Zol, sorry.
Yeah, I, I think, um, Roxanne's point is a good one. I, I think that the, the, just the missing step here was, would have been a, a document in advance that we could review. And I think we can sort of do that in the future. I think it's great if we have, like, in this case, Ms. Bradley, um, work with HR to kind of compile it and then, and then I think just the circulation. I wouldn't want to hold up, uh, any sort of performance, particularly with an E minus, which is very, uh, very laudable, um, that we wouldn't want to, um, sort of hold that up. Um, I, it's very funny to do your job, uh, like a public review. Um, I was one of the, the three folks that turned in my comments and I shared with Nick. Like, I've been in this job for like, you know, not, not very long and so I, I didn't have that much useful feedback, but, you know, I did provide some and I think, I think Roxanne's point is really, um, excellent. If we could, um, you know, think about that for next year, uh, for the process. Maybe we just get it started a little earlier and then get picked in the tail a little harder to get our stuff in.
Well, that's, that's the point that I was going to make, which is the process was a little bit abbreviated this year because we had a turnover in May and we just, and it, it came on us suddenly. And so, um, Ms. Bradley volunteered to take it on in a very abbreviated couple, you know, couple of weeks, basically to do it. So, um, so I think the answer is to start earlier and next time and make sure we get, we get that circul-
Absolutely, I am more than happy to circulate this. I didn't know that that was part of the process. That wasn't what was relayed to me and I apologize. Um, I thought I was just doing what I was asked to do. The numbers are literally, it takes me all of, I don't know, five minutes to put them in. It's very simple, it's E, Ss and Is for 49 questions, it's very simple. The, um, the comments, um, I'm more than happy to put into a document without anybody's name next to it, all of the comments and they can be reviewed, that's fine if that's what folks would like. The one cautionary tale that I, I would like to say, um, having been supervised by a board for many, many years and having folks that were doing HR within my nonprofit organization, um, she reports to Nick and so it's almost an interesting dynamic. I think the reason why it is handled the way it's handled is because it's private information that we are filling out as his bosses. And so, um, that's why it goes into the personnel file, that's why the process is as it is. She doesn't look at it, she's not supposed to look at it, she's literally supposed to put it into the personnel file. Um, if somebody else on our board would like to, to take this on moving forward, that's absolutely-
absolutely fine. I just volunteered to do it. But I don't think that having somebody who works for the town administrator going through this and analyzing this is the most appropriate thing for us to do, seeing as we are the town administrators' supervisors, and he reports to us. So that's my two cents.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. So I'm certainly not suggesting that we're going to hold up the process or anything. I'm saying going forward, like, I appreciate that you put that together, you know, and put it in a spreadsheet form or however you did it. I just think that going forward, we need to review that before we talk about it in public because, again, maybe something, maybe there are some specific comments besides the Es and the Ss and the Is that we want to make sure that, that Nick understands that, you know, we might have a concern in a certain area, or, you know, or maybe we think he's great in a certain area, and we want to put a plug in that's a positive too. So, you know, it sort of cuts both ways, but if we don't have a process for that, that's the problem. So I think for this purpose, I'm not going to hold anything up. I'm certainly fine with that, but I think that going forward, that's not cool. Like, I think we have to be able to see what we're putting forward before we present it to them.
So if this was just, so if Ben had put this together, if it was just sent out to the five of us for review prior to it being here, that's the step that's missing?
Right, because maybe there's something specific you wanted as a comment, right?
I just was confused, yeah.
Yeah, maybe there's something specific you wanted, or you wanted, or any of us wanted. It's just, you know, I know you're saying the Es, and the Ss, and the Is, but maybe there's a specific comment, and we don't have, like, I don't know if it's in there. Well, I don't know if it's in there, you know? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I'm not here to debate it, but it would just be so much easier, that's all.
Mr. Zoll, I could just add an additional piece of information. So what will, my performance evaluation is public, and the document does become public. So the reason that we allow the individuals to go into the personnel files in case, to give members that opportunity to be very frank in the written documents, and then allow the select boards to produce a composite that pulls all that together. So it wouldn't necessarily be a copy and paste of everybody's comments, but more of a composite that accurately reflects everybody's comments. So I think what you're getting to is having that opportunity to review that, and I think that, that makes sense for future, and I can be on all of you folks to get this out a little bit earlier, and it can be, we can make, maybe we'll make it the 50th category.
And I'll be happy to write this all up and get it to somebody in a more composite format.
So I'm wondering if, if, you know, we have to approve an annual performance evaluation for the purposes of the contract. I think we can approve an overall evaluation, which is the, which is the E minus, right? That's, that's, that's the purpose of the contract. And then perhaps we, we, at our next meeting, we can ratify the actual document.
Sure.
After it's been...
That makes sense.
Passed around.
After it's been, and then we're in compliance with the contract. We don't have to worry about any salary issues, and then we've, we've had a chance to, you know, review the actual document. Does that make sense?
Well, that works for me. Works for us, too.
All right. So the motion would be to approve Mr. Milano's, the town administrator's overall evaluation as having met the E status.
So I'll move to approve the town administrator's annual performance evaluation at E minus status.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Can you tell me what the next steps are? Can you, just, just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, not at all.
Can you please now tell me or the board what the next steps are in this process?
Next step is to create a document, which you have.
I do.
A spreadsheet with a composite of comments. Circulate it to all of us.
Can I do that, or do I have to send it to Nick?
Well, no, you can circulate it to all of us as long as you don't comment on it.
I will not.
Just circulate it to all of us, and then we can, we can talk about it at our next meeting and then make some changes at our meeting, and then vote on it.
And you'll, and sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, and Roxanne, do you want me to include yours, or do you want, yes?
Yeah, I mean, I have it here.
I returned it to...
Yeah, I got it back, but you already saw it. I mean, there's really not much else I don't think that I would change, and I just wanted to have a chance to relook at it only because I was the first one to turn it in too. And I was like, what? I want, so I would, just want to take a quick look at it one more time.
That's absolutely fine.
And just a point of clarification, when Erin circulates that, when Ms. Bradley circulates that document, the comments will be anonymized.
Yes.
Even though all of mine will be obvious because it'll be like, I'm brand new.
But I'm going to make a composite of them.
Right.
So what Mr. Milano just said was, there's a composite of it.
And then we can comment and like, I really wanted to include this bit.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I will also include the wonderful 3-2-1 spreadsheet I did.
Yes.
Thank you for your, thank you for working on that.
Appreciate that. Many thanks for the effort on that. Item 16, Town Administrator's Report.
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of updates here. The Matapan Line Transformation Program public meeting was held last week on the 20th. I know several of you were in attendance. They are moving ahead with the design process for the Matapan Line. They have preliminary cost estimates and very preliminary concept designs for each of the stations, excluding Matapan and Ashmont, which are going to be bigger, more intensive projects. Some of the highlights include moving Central Ave, one of the Central Ave stops, and some of the improvements at Milton Station include a new elevator, as well as some handicap accessibility access improvements. They do intend to do some short-term projects, including a paving project at the Milton Station parking lot, and another early action would be to start working on the bridges along the Matapan Line ahead of the bigger project to complete the stations, as well as the line improvements that they're planning on. They do have upwards, over $100 million already budget towards this project. So everything is moving ahead, and they anticipate reaching the 15% design phase by the end of this calendar year. Also, the week before that, we, Tim Zerwinski and the Planning Department held another MBTA Communities Forum at the library. Emily Connors started today, started yesterday, excuse me, as the Assistant Health Director down in the Health Department, so we're excited to have her onboard. We are still seeking a health agent, if anybody is interested in a role here in municipal government as a health agent. We, other job openings include our IT assistant position, several positions down at Department of Public Works. We have also posted the appointed treasurer collector position, and all of those positions are posted on the town website. And just as a reminder, our summer concert series is ongoing. The next two are this Wednesday and next Wednesday. The Canton American Legion Band will be here tomorrow, and then next week, the Black Velvet Band will be outside Town Hall at the gazebo on the Wednesday, the 28th, and Wednesday, July 5th. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Chair's report, item 17.
I had a quick question, Mr. Milano. I'm wondering if you have that ability to put that link up that we were forwarded on the noise from Mr. Corey?
Yes, I can distribute that.
Or put it on the website. I didn't see it there.
Okay.
So I just want to mention what that is again for people that might be watching or listening.
Related to the sound study down at the Reville Yard that is, we've been working with MBTA on to allow folks to respond and provide information to the T, regarding noise coming out of, out of that station. Thank you.
Thanks.
And maybe we'll put that on the agenda, if we want to have a discussion of it. Maybe we can put that on the next agenda. Three items in the Chair's report. First, there was a wonderful Juneteenth celebration at the Eustace Estate last Saturday that was in no way dampened by the excessive rain on that day. And of particular note for me was the Branches Steel Drum Orchestra. None of the, all of the, all of the, all of the artists were fantastic, but that steel drum orchestra was really something. Two, I think we need to acknowledge that the Milton High School baseball team won the state championship for the second year in a row, which is a huge accomplishment. And it's really the purview of the school committee to have the baseball team in. I don't know if they let us join that as well, but, but we really need to acknowledge huge accomplishment. And I will add as well, I think one of the star pitchers, who was also the quarterback of the football team, has committed to Williams College, so good news for Williams College going forward in baseball and football, at least, I hope. And then, item three, this, as Mr. Wells alluded to earlier this weekend, many, many, many Milton residents enjoyed the wonderful Milton Music Fest on Saturday with the bands and fireworks, and on Sunday with the Celtic bands. And so it was, Sunday was, actually, it turned out to be great weather, both Saturday and Sunday. The weather broke on Saturday, and Sunday the weather was great. So it was a great event put on by a small group of organizers, including Mr. Wells and Kathy Fagan, Glenn Pavlicek, and Lynda Lee Sheridan, and I'm sure there are other people that I'm not mentioning, but I think that's really the core group that has been doing this for the last 10 years. So thanks to all of them. Pardon me. Item 18, Public Comment Response. Ms. Bradley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I inadvertently forgot to address Mr. D'Amato earlier when I was speaking. My, my apologies. During the meeting, I had actually asked Lynn and Nick for the ARPA grant because I was confused with what the money was allocated for. In the ARPA grant, it does in fact say that the intention was to sell off that Central Street location. So my apologies to him, to his wife. I was confused. There was a lot of ARPA grants that came through over a year ago, and I, I messed up on that. So I hope that he accepts my apology and know that I did go back and look at it, and I absolutely was mistaken on that. So thank you, Mr. D'Amato, for bringing that up, and I appreciate that reminder.
Anything else? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Just a couple of different things with different speakers that came. Mr. Hogan, who spoke and represents a lot of the people that, that are affected by the potential roundabout, I appreciated his comments. I appreciated that we had people here to speak about the roundabout. I think we found out some interesting questions that we had, and answers or lack of answers on some, which was a little concerning, too. And I think that, just as we talked about, we're going to move forward and see what we can do to do the right thing for the town, for safety, and for the ability for these residents to get out safely, too. So I do think that was really helpful that we had the speakers here and that he came up to speak. Also wanted to talk about Jackson Humphries and Jim Davis, who both spoke about the potential reclassification of our community under MBTA communities, and for pulling a document together. I think that's tremendous. It's a lot of work to do that, and it looked like there were a lot of citations and things. So I think that's very helpful as a starting place for us, and I want to thank both of them for doing that. The other things, I guess I would say, is I think it's a sad day when we have a select board member who, who steps away from the table, and I think that has to be acknowledged. I think, you know, there were several comments that people made, either if they came here or that we received, and, you know, I do appreciate Ms. Bradley and the apology. I do appreciate that. And I do believe people deserve second chances. That being said, I think we really need to look at what behavior has happened. And, and there have been several instances that things have happened dating back a month or more, you know? And I think when the community is noticing that, we really have to be cognizant of that. And then we represent everybody, and we can't be angry at people if we have a different opinion. We have to be respectful. We have to be able to work with people. And I think if people are afraid to come here, that says something. If people in the community are afraid to speak up, you know, and I think that's a tough thing. So that would just be my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on public comment response? Item 19, Discussion Approval of Meeting Minutes, June 3, 2023, and June 13, 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 3, 2023, and June 13, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 20, Future Meeting Dates. We are set up for July 11th, July 25th, and August 8th. Are we all good with those dates, the Tuesdays every two weeks? Good? All right. Item 21, before we move to item 21, let me ask Mr. Milano, should we defer on items 24 and 25 after executive session?
Yes, on 24. I think potentially we may have something discussed on 25, depending on how the executive session goes.
Okay.
An open session.
So then we have to come back. If we, if we, if we may come back, we have to come back.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So we'll, we'll, and we can always, if we have nothing to do, we'll just defer at 25. So, so we're going to go into executive session, and, and we have executive sessions for items 21, 22, and 23?
Correct.
All right. So I will move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with A, Milton Clerical Unit of the Southeastern Public Employees Association, B, Milton Professional Management Association, C, Milton Firefighters Local 1116. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board, and the select board will return to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
I move to enter into executive sec, executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. Blue Hill Ave, B 75 and 676, Precious Ave, B 74. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. The select board will return to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And finally, I move to, move to enter into executive session to discuss the purchase, purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. The town will end in Warf Street. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. The select board will return to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll, yes? So we are moving into executive session, and we will return to speak about item 25. And returning from executive session to the select board meeting of June 27, 2023, we're going to defer on item 25, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you all for joining us. We will be back on Tuesday, July 11, 2023. Happy Fourth of July. Enjoy your weekends, and we'll look forward to seeing you then. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.